The regular meeting of the city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, held March 18th, 2014 at 6:00 PM at the council chambers. Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Linsky.
Here.
Councilmember Garrison.
Present.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
And Councilmember Howery is absent.
Okay. And pledge of allegiance, would you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz?
Madam Mayor, just two quick items. The hockey rink is in the process of being resurfaced. The new fencing.
Yay!
Has been put on. And they're in the process of reinforcing the railings around the side, fencing around the side. And the only other thing I had, Mayor, which is probably something you could talk more about than me, but next week is the SciTech Festival. And a lot of great activities planned for that. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I was at the chamber breakfast on Thursday morning where my granddaughter was awarded Educator of the Year for Verdi Pride Day, and we are really, really proud of her.
Okay, Mr. Dowling?
The mayor will provide a follow-up on this too, but Saturday, I had the honor of riding in the Sedogh Parade, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the slowest bicycle ride of my life.[562.54][562.54][laughter] Hands were sore. We're riding the Cottonwood City Cycladers and slash Ride for Wife. Anyway, so that'll be May 17th and 18th will be the big event. And then if you're interested in any information or donations, I have a Facebook page called Ride for Wife. You can just go there and like it, and there'll be updates and information as it comes. Or you can do a search for Bike MS, Ride the Vortex, and you'll get to the MS Society's webpage, and it has all the information as well.
Okay.
And give it another shot this year.
All right. And I'll just piggyback with that. This weekend, the 22nd, starting about 8:30, could be there at 8:00 probably, is the Verdi Valley Senior Center's Mayor Walk a Mile for Meals. So if you want to help a senior come in, or donate, or help with the walk, and that helps an elderly person get a meal every day, and the volunteer is often the only person that that elderly person sees all day, and sometimes all week. So the Verdi Valley Senior Center, they distribute about 56,000 meals a year, and NACOG only covers 28% of that. So most elderly people aren't able to pay the daily amount, and so all of that money has to be fundraised by Elaine Brimner and her staff. So please come out and support a senior. All right. So the next item is proclamations. And we have Go Blue for CASA Month. And CASA is a very important program in the Verdi Valley. And this proclamation will help you know a little bit about what does CASA mean. Whereas the National CASA, which means Court Appointed Special Advocate Association, is a network of 955 programs that are recruiting, training, and supporting volunteers to represent the best interests of abused and neglected children in the courtroom and other settings. And whereas CASA volunteers are appointed by judges to watch over and advocate for abused and neglected children, to make sure they don't get lost in the overburdened legal and social service system, or languish in inappropriate group or foster homes. And whereas the Verdi Valley CASA Children's Foundation, a member of the National CASA Association, a nonprofit 501(c)(3), was created in 2006 to provide financial assistance for the unmet needs of the children of our greater Verdi Valley who are wards of the court. And whereas the mission statement of the Verdi Valley CASA Children's Foundation reads, "To enhance the quality of life for dependent children under court supervision in the greater Verdi Valley." And whereas, at this time, there are approximately 75 children in the greater Verdi Valley that have been removed from their homes and are currently wards of the court. And whereas, independent research has demonstrated that children with a CASA volunteer are substantially less likely to spend time in long-term foster care, and less likely to re-enter care. And whereas, the color blue is the national color representing abused and neglected children. And whereas, the month of April has been declared Go Blue for CASA Month in the greater Verdi Valley. And now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of the city of Cottonwood, do hereby proclaim April 2014 as Go Blue for CASA Month of the city, month in the city of Cottonwood. And we have Dr. Bob Richards with us tonight to accept this.[821.44][821.44][applause]
At least our best and thank her for all she does for the children. You wanna?
In April, there'll be wristbands, there'll be hands, and you can purchase those while you tell for your recognition. They'll be during bars, during financial institution, there's categories around the Verdi Valley. And the Hux Foundation is very worthwhile. It supports all these positive children. It gives them the opportunity through the foundation to have things that are just paid in advance, but they may not otherwise be able to. So, thank you, Mayor Jones.
You're welcome.
For the information in the city of Cottonwood. Yes, here we have a CASA blue band.
All right.
I beat the rush.
Thank you. Okay, presentations. Toys for Tots plaques of appreciation to the recreation center, Cottonwood Fire Department, and Troy and Amy Hope.
And Mayor, can we, is it possible to move that to the other items after the other two presentations? We're waiting for Troy Hope, he's on his way here.
Absolutely.
Long, he's on his way.
Okay. Update regarding the Verdi Valley Humane Society, aka Adopt for Life.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Vice Mayor Pfeiffer, and the council. I appreciate the time that you've given us this evening to speak about the Verdi Valley Humane Society. My name is Grace Lar. I have lived in the Verdi Valley for 25 years, and I own Taco Bell in Cottonwood for the same 25 years. I am currently the president of the Verdi Valley Humane Society since April of 2013, and have been on the board since 2011. I am an animal lover and not a public speaker, so I will read from my notes. I am here on behalf of the Verdi Valley Humane Society, and would like to ask the city of Cottonwood to partner with us so we can create a humane organization that the community will be proud of, and to also organize a ladder of communication so we all are on the same page. I would like to give the council a brief recent history of our organization. In 2005, after touring the area and seeing the desperate need for Cottonwood to have a new animal shelter, a private family foundation approached Verdi Valley Humane Society with the promise of matching funds, of donating nearly a million dollars to the facility. Architectural plans were drawn and public campaign was promised by the Verdi Valley Humane Society Board and the CEO. By 2009, the family foundation had given $700,000 towards the realization of a new building, and demanded the construction start before costs continued to climb, or their donations would have to be returned. The building was started, but very few matching funds were ever raised by the board or the CEO. Their new plan was to erect only the first half of the building, which is currently what it is right now, and using the family foundations that were already contributed. The stated goal was to continue raising funds to complete the building at a later date. Part one of the building was complete and moved into on March of 2010. And the donors gave another $50,000 towards the start of the building fund for the completion of the original plan. In April of 2011, the Verdi Valley Humane Society CEO resigned, leaving a total of only $17,000 in combined accounts, and zero earmarked for the continuation of the building fund. A new board was immediately formed, and it was soon discovered that the organization was seriously in debt, owing money for unpaid bills from propane to insurance. License and registrations had lapsed, and virtually no basic office organization or filing had been kept up for more than a year. Since April of 2011, the Verdi Valley Humane Society has had board members and staff come and go. The organization's tax return for the period ending July of 2012 showed the Verdi Valley Humane Society more than $92,000 in debt. A year ago, desperate to save the organization, I stepped up to the board position. I had the board agree that we would take and manage day-to-day operations temporarily without a CEO. Having no previous animal shelter experience, this had been one of the hardest undertakings of my life. It has been both chaotic and exhausting. However, each time I felt I could not find the energy to go on, someone stepped in to help, show faith in me, and give me the encouragement I needed to continue. When local veterinarians could no longer help because of bad debt, the Jerome Humane Society donated their clinic services, spaying and neutering of countless efforts, and Dr. Kenaway. The city of Cottonwood offered us a spot for a thrift store for a dollar a year rent. Volunteers worked in excess of 15,000 hours to exercise and interact with the animals until they find homes, forever homes. Dedicated individuals agreed to work hard jobs at low-paying salaries, taking care of these animals and the facilities. I am proud to say the tax return ending 2003 shows the Verdi Valley Humane Society $9,993 in the black. Contributions were over the previous year. Local veterinarians, Dr. Hookum, Dr. Brady, Dr. Gama Wagner, and Dr. Oler are working with us in providing services at rescue prices. The percentage of animals brought in and then adopted was higher than ever before. We have begun sending out direct mail appeals. A humane education committee has been formed, and we have committed to a new site for the thrift store. While I am proud of all the accomplishments we have made as a staff and volunteers this past year, I am here to say it is not a permanent solution. Summer is the hardest time, and we have the most intakes. The Jerome Humane Society cannot continue to provide us with donated services. The city of Cottonwood sold the building and ended our thrift store lease earlier this year, and now our rent has increased to $2,100 a month. Community support, trusts, and large donations cannot be taken for granted. The board can no longer continue our temporary plan for day-to-day operations of the shelter. We need the city's help to continue. The Verdi Valley Humane Society is asking the city to help us continue this incredible momentum developed over the past year. We need to hire a professional to run daily operations so we can function as a board, as a designated board. The board must focus on fundraising to sustain the organization and to complete the second half of the building that is woefully inadequate without designated isolation areas, grooming, or medical stations. We must also work on developing programs that benefit the animals and educate the public, including spay, neuter, and humane education. We are asking for the city to make a two-year commitment to pay for the salary of a seasoned professional executive director, to take our nonprofit to the next level. We want the Cottonwood community to have a progressive sheltering organization. Everyone can take proud, can be proud in, one that visitors might tour and hope to replicate. I hope one day to keep our commitment to the family foundation that had faith in our community to complete the building they envisioned. In partnership with the city of Cottonwood, we should like to build upon the success of this past year and evolve into a humane organization that we can all be proud of. Lastly, if your passion isn't the animals, please visit the shelter to see how hard the staff and the volunteers take care of those animals every day. Just, they show up every single day until those animals find a forever home. I just ask that you all visit and appreciate what we do for the city and the humane society. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just give us two seconds.
Sure, if you would come up, and then if you would sign one of these, and...
Or... What, can I just say something and then sign?
Yes, you may.
I just want you to let you know that Grace has done all this on a volunteer basis. She just gets paid nothing for her hard work, and her efforts, and her caring.
And we all know, those of us that have dealt with Grace, we know that she's done a fantastic job, and is very dedicated.
I would just like you to know that, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just on another subject, when we talk about needing a new city hall, remember that, and support us when the time comes, because we don't have enough space for our community. Our community's grown, but our council chambers hasn't, so... So there are many, many needs throughout the city, and that is one of them. And I apologize to those of you who couldn't have a seat. I'm really sorry about that. But thank you, Grace. We know that you, we know that Rudy, and I, and the city manager, and the council have all been working with you the past year, or two years, back when Kyla was the president right after everything kind of turned over. We realize how dedicated many people are to the animals of our community, and we certainly appreciate that.
And I hope that I have an opportunity to visit here, and just encounter there. Please, I encourage people to meet with me and stare at the volunteers.
Okay.
To know how great a jobs they do, and what we're working with, and what we did.
And I love your Facebook page and all the sharing, I think, okay, sharing all the stories of the happy adoptions, and that's excellent. That's a good way to communicate, I think, with the public. I try to share them, so if everybody could share that, you'd get the word out more, and more opportunities for the animals to be adopted. And the newspapers give you very good coverage. They've been great partners also, so... And then all of the folks here that volunteer, so we appreciate everyone.
I have a lot of support, and you can tell.
Yes, you do, and that's, you need it, so that's good. The animals need it. So we'll have this conversation again during the budget, the budget meetings, so you'll be invited back to speak again. But now we have a heads up on what you're requesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we appreciate that. Okay, so Toys for Tots ready yet? So Chris, is Chris here? We'll get some room for seats here. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if you want to take a minute, there's gonna be a mass exit.
Well, wait.
Should, should change. Oh, you're not leaving.
I got four of them, they weren't adopted from the pound, but I kept going to the pound.
When we lost our last dog, I went up to the pound for about two days a week, for probably two weeks, you know, going through it. Got to plan, I just couldn't go up anymore, I just couldn't bring myself to go through there.
Those eyes. Those ads on TV of those abused animals just tear me up.
We can not stop and run the door, and we move down the sidewalk a little way.
You tell them, Jody.
Proud control.
That was the lady who almost spoke.
How much money she paid, like how much? Those all hung out through their board, right? So they've been running without an ED right now for a couple of years now.
They need to part the waters.
So they had an ED when Tyler was back.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is Toys for Tots plaques of appreciation to the recreation center, Cottonwood Fire Department, and Troy and Amy Hope. Ms. Vogler?
Madam Mayor and council, I'm just gonna get started, get through this.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm just going to get started and get through this. I have, the first award is going to Hezekiah representing the Cottonwood Rec Center, and it is an appreciation of you letting us have our Christmas parties there for the last few years and hosting it. I know it's been a big tour having five or 100 kids and families and all there, and it's a big to-do. And I just wanted to present this to you and let you display it, and...
So if we could have both of you come up permanently, so that the folks in TV land can see this presentation also.
You too. And the next one is our Cottonwood Fire Department. They are always available to help us. Last few years, they've been actually helping us bag and load the toys on our trucks and unload at the parties. And, I mean, we have boxes, and I just wanted to present this to say thank you.
Okay, and watch those wires there. They make me uncomfortable with people walking around and they're sticking out.
Without their help, there's no way that we could do this, even with our volunteer staff. It takes a lot of young, heavy guys that can lift, and there are a bunch of old people that are not able to really lift heavy boxes. We really thank you.
Yes, I'm a heavy guy. I'm not young, so I must be heavy. Thank you very much.
And then Troy and Amy, if you'll come up here. I can't say enough about these two.
Watch the cords.
They're always there to support me. I've got Troy's personal cellphone number now and email. I think he's sorry he shared that because whenever I need help with anything, he's right there, and they need to. So, thank you both. And I'm not crying this time.
You did last year.
I know.
Thank you very much, and we're very proud as a council of our employees and also all of our community volunteers, the Marine Corps League. And I would just also like to thank my colleagues on the city council. I know that you're all very supportive of Toys for Tots, and I want to thank each of you for that, supporting that and supporting our employees and serving the children of the Verdi Valley. Okay, thank you very much, Chris. All right, bye-bye. Okay, Verdi Valley SciTech Festival, which is going to be held March 22nd through 29th, and we have Mr. Rudy Rodriguez. And again, I know I've said this before, but I want to say it again. Council can be very proud of Mr. Rodriguez. He has really just been an anchor for this whole program and getting it off the ground. And my biggest thing about the SciTech Festival is the regionalism, the cooperation among Camp Verdi, Clarkdale, Cottonwood, all of our school districts, our businesses, and our nonprofits have all joined together for this activity. So many kudos to our finance director for helping out so much because I know that he has sort of been the glue that's kind of held us all together.
All right, Mayor Council, as you may notice, I put some good stuff in front of you. And we'll go over a couple of those items. Again, wanted to go ahead and mention that I appreciate the being allowed to work on this project. It has been kind of tedious at times and kind of nerve-wracking at times, but I think after next week ends, I think it's going to be very rewarding. We're looking forward to it. I'll go ahead and read some of this because it's kind of lengthy. The Verdi Valley SciTech Festival is an extension of the Arizona SciTech Festival, a statewide celebration of science, technology, engineering, and math. STEM for short, and if you add the arts, it's STEAM. When you include the arts, obviously. Held annually in February and March through a series of over 400 expos, workshops, conversation, exhibits, and tours held in the diverse neighborhoods throughout the state, the Arizona SciTech Festival excites and informs Arizonans from age three to 103 about how STEM will drive our state for the next century. I went ahead and I've got the websites here. Rather than trying to put on gigantic presentation, I just want to go ahead and highlight that we have two websites to look at. One is the statewide festival site, Arizona SciTech Fest, and the Verdi Valley SciTech org website. I do want to mention that the local website, being the verdivallyscitech.org website, was and still is being developed by a young man, Lucas Hamilton, 16-year-old from Mingus Union High School, has been putting this thing together on his spare time. And though it's still growing, he has been instrumental in keeping that website up to date. First, I'll go over the Arizona SciTech Festival website. And maybe we won't. And neither of the two are working. My apologies.
It says you don't have a connection?
Says I don't have a connection. Let's see.
Now it says you're getting connected.
No, maybe it'll connect now. It has limited connectivity. Okay.
You want my cellphone?
I think it's public. Let's see if it'll connect. If not, we'll go to Plan B. All right, I guess we're going to Plan B. What you have in front of you, you have a couple of these posters, and I have six right here, so please, if you want to, pick one up, take it with you, post it at your business, give it to your friends, do something with it, and appreciate it. There it has, the Arizona SciTech Fest website poster, which is an annual poster. And then we have the Verdi Valley SciTech poster. We've had someone from the, Jerry from the state has actually, their designers have put this stuff together for us. But these posters show is all the specific events that the City of Cottonwood, Camp Verdi, and a couple of other agencies. We have the Monizuma Well event. We have an event from Verdi River of Riverfest Outdoor Science over at Dead Horse State Park. That kind of is the kickoff on March 22nd, ending with the Verdi Valley Archaeology Fair the 29th and 30th in Camp Verdi. We have Mingus Union High School will put on their STEM showcase on March 27th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Yellow Pie College, the Verdi campus, will be putting on their expo from 5:00 to 9:00 on the 28th of March. But you need to go ahead and look at this if you can, if you get a chance, share it. As I said, I have plenty of these both here and in my office. You're more than welcome to them. I also put together a, in your packet, you have what we call a fun book, SciTech Fun Book, the solar edition. This is available on the Verdi Valley SciTech website for download for parents to go out and pull for their kids. And what it has, it's basically a lot of good information about different types of projects, different things work, and of course, it's got some ads in there too. But it's just a fun book for the kids to read, and it has a lot of good information about how certain things work, mostly solar projects. Also with what was given to the council, we have what was designed, what they call a passbook. And what parents...
Passport?
Oh, passport, excuse me. Passport. And what this basically does is every child or adult who goes to these particular events will get a punch where there's a punch, and if there's, some of these events have multiple exhibitors, and they'll be able to write their name and get a punch. Once you have six of these punches, you assign your name, address, phone number, and if you're under and over 21, and I'll explain that in just a second. And we will be sorting through these, the under and over 21, and there'll be prizes such as an iPad Mini. We'll also have different types of books available that are going to be raffled off that particular day. We will have two wine baskets available for those that are over 21, hence the reason we have an over and under 21 on here. So we have something for both the adults, and we have something for the young folks up to 31, including those mini iPads and also some tablets. The picture you have up there, can't very well see it. The other lights.
Do you want to log on to my phone?
I don't know if I can from here, but...
If you want to, I mean, I can. Am I showing it?
I'll check in just a second, see if I can't get a better connection in just a second.
Good against those SciTech people later.
Yeah, the website is down, there's no technology out.
This mountain over there makes it kind of hard to get a good connection down in here.
Okay, I tried. This is just a photo of the SciTech Festival team for the City of Cottonwood. We do have some members missing. We have Chief Fanning and Gary Isenga missing out of there, and our photographer, our mayor, from this particular team. To show just a small amount of the effort that's being put into this, wanted to go ahead and put up a slide here of some of the items that, some of the places that have the events, banners. The Chamber of Commerce has a banner posted up there. We have, our local library has it up there. Our Recreation Center put up their banner. This is Mingus High School has their banner up. SEC Surveying Engineering and Land Planning has their banner up. Our Trash Center also has it. Our Utility Offices will put up their banner, and this is the Yellow Pie College has two banners up there. There's still banners out there. We didn't get all the photographs, as much as I asked them to send me their photographs again, but we've got banners all over the City of Cottonwood and Camp Verdi and Clarkdale. If you see our Cats buses and our Lynx buses running around, you might see this stuff on their windows. This is advertising, and it's advertising both our SciTech and our sponsors for this particular event. Both buses, both of the systems, the Lynx and Cats have all their buses plastered both sides with this particular advertising. We, in talking to Parks and Rec recently, we're going to be looking at advertising such as this for a lot of our events, including TBR and also our Rhythm and Ribs. So we're looking at trying to do some of that type of advertising too. It's rather neat. Those buses go all over Sedona, they go all over Camp Verdi and the part of the villages, I mean, not Camp Verdi, Cottonwood and part of the villages. We were hoping to have the Yellow Pie Transit System already up and running so we could put some on theirs, but unfortunately, that didn't happen. This is just an example of the amount of sponsors and contributors we have for this particular event. It's not just, it has, the college has all the local schools, both here and in Camp Verdi and Clarkdale, has a number of businesses throughout the Verdi Valley. We're really pushing this event really heavily, and we would like to invite not just the council and the city staff, but also everyone that is within reach, both of the team of our television. We would like to go ahead and have them attend these events. They go on all week long. If after tonight you still want to find out some information, it's posted on the city's website. It is also posted on the city's Facebook account. We will be having a televised interview between our mayor and James Perry from Yellow Pie College going up relatively soon. We'd like to make sure that everyone attends this event. We're expecting it to be pretty big and pretty exciting, and it'll be an educational event for all of those involved. And that pretty much does it for me.
So it's a very exciting time. We do have Principal from Mingus Union High School, Jennifer Chilton, here tonight. Did you want to comment about anything?
Oh, no, we're just, we're not complaining and excited for our week from Thursday to be our...
You have to come up here so you can hear us.
No one will be able to hear you except us right here.
The Mingus Union High School is hosting a face-to-face showcase, which will be from Thursday, so it'll be our science teachers demonstrating, our math teachers also, just introducing to the community what we have available, technology and math, whole world of college algebra, and our, am I facing the wrong way? And our career and technical offerings, so they'll have, you know, the 3D printer up and running, showcasing some of the learning that these they have. So we're just very excited. It's a week from Thursday, and this has been a pleasure. It's been an honor, the community collaboration for quite a long time in the planning, so that'll just be a privilege. We can't wait for Thursday night, no, we can't wait for the following day to be out of Yellow Pie College.
Thank you very much. Everybody's been working really, really hard.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, if anybody needs some copies of anything, you're more than welcome to take them with you. I know Tom is going to pick a bunch of this stuff up, plastered all over the city for us. That's Amy, Tom. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Any questions from the council on this? So there will be a lot of exciting things to do. We're hoping by publishing on this show, the show, the council meeting show, that will get more people interested. And I did just want to thank Unisource, who has contributed $1,000 for prizes, and of course, the city council, I want to thank you. You've contributed up to $2,000 for prizes. And the Yellow Pie College Foundation has contributed the iPad Mini and some other things. And then, of course, we don't want to forget the Arizona SciTech Festival, Dr. Jeremy Babender, who has helped us with some, they printed these posters for us, and these materials, they've donated the fun books to us, and just helped us out, you know, as much as they could. So we really, I mean, each entity, like Mingus Union High School, Cottonwood, Yellow Pie College, Clarkdale, they're going to be at the expo at the college, Camp Verdi. Each entity's kind of been in charge of themselves, so it's really been an amazingly low-budget project, I think.
And Jeremy from the state also mentioned that he has yet to see, and he's been doing this for three years now, he has yet to see this much participation, this many people involved in putting this thing together. We had about 30 or 35 people.
He counted 40.
He counted 40.
He was so impressed.
And we have people missing at that, at our last meeting.
It is, a lot of cooperation, so it's all good. Thank you, Rudy. Okay, moving on to the next item, is called to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any items... However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Okay, we have Lonnie Wyatt. If you just turn that down a little bit, I think you'll be okay. There you go.
First off, my, 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 um, my service dog is a rescue dog who's turned out to be, if I didn't have her, I doubt very much I'd be here. She's wonderful. I'm thinking that the backside of my wheelchair is a fine place for advertising space. I've been here for months on the sidewalks, driveways. I've finally gotten to a point, now I'm working with ADOT. Unfortunately, between the last meeting and now, I've had another little stroke, so I don't know how much I can continue to pound in that we're still falling down, ending up in, in traffic dangerously. I'm especially interested with ADOT on how they're going to decide the sidewalks for the new Sears that Bob Backus is building. And if I have faith in anybody, it's in Mr. Backus. Hopefully, we get a sidewalk there. That was one place when Morgan and I went out in the streets, that he watched me just spinning to try and get grip, to get, to maneuver to the sidewalk. So I want to thank you. I have to try and concentrate other things. I want, I want to come back. I do, and I'm heartbroken. I wish I could get that crowd to listen that we're in here, because you don't know unless you're out there. I still would really love to challenge council. I'll make it all happen until let's go out there in some wheelchairs. You said your wife is in a chair, and try and maneuver just across the street at Walgreens without getting killed. I have my own ash can, trash can. I had to get an Oogahorn just in case my demure voice doesn't get the attention of people trying to kill me out there. I've devoted 40 years to this disease, and I'm not going to get hit by a car, you know? But I'd be happy to advertise. I've started to advertise for small businesses, either wearing their stuff or, I'm doing anything I can to jump up and down and get enough attention. I thought I was going to grow up and be president.
Thank you, Lonnie. We appreciate your comments. Okay, the next item is item number eight, approval of minutes. They looked good to me. Any corrections or suggestions? Mr. Pratt?
I just had a question, and I don't know if I'm missing something. Is Lyndon Norman listed there as a council member on the minutes?
I didn't notice that. That would be...
I thought she was, and I was wondering why.
I'm getting there. Hang on just a second.
I know, I got to go all the way back.
I know, I don't read those, I read the content, so we're, which, which one? Oh, yeah, she is.
Is that a mistake?
She is listed.
Okay. I just wondered about it.
Six, so, yeah, Randy's not there.
I get the point, it's a mistake.
Okay, so that, that should be corrected, and then the other set is also the same. So just those two corrections. Okay, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the minutes with the suggested corrections.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Resolution number 2741, authorizing the submission of a grant proposal in connection with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, fiscal year 2015, funding cycle for selective traffic enforcement patrol overtime cost. Item number two is resolution number 2742, authorizing the submission of a grant proposal in connection with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, fiscal year 2015, funding cycle for DUI task force detail, overtime, and to purchase an unmarked police vehicle. Item number three is special event liquor license application submitted by Beth Kennedy, application for the Verde Valley Fair Association for events scheduled for April 5th, 2014, and October 17th and 18th, 2014, at the Verde Valley Fairgrounds located at 800 East Cherry Street. Item number four is special event liquor license application submitted by Cindy Batisti, applicant for the Old Town Association for the Run of the Roses event scheduled in Old Town for May 2nd and 3rd, 2014. Council, are there any items that you would like to pull for discussion? Any items from the public? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Ilinski made the motion, Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business. The following items are for council dis...
I'm the mayor.
Oh, resolutions, yes, sir. Okay, Deputy Clerk, please read resolution number 2741 and resolution number 2742 by title only.
Resolution number 2741, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the submission of a grant proposal in connection with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, fiscal year 2015, funding cycle for the Cottonwood Police Department for funding to assist with selective traffic enforcement patrol overtime costs. And resolution number 2742, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the police department to submit a fiscal year 2015 grant proposal to the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, seeking funds to cover overtime expenses associated with the department's DUI task force, and to purchase an unmarked police vehicle. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, back to new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. And at the pleasure of the council, I would like to move item number three, resolution number 2743, opposing the legalization of marijuana, up to the next item. Is that all right with everyone? Okay. Chief Fanning?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, town administration. Tonight I present for your consideration a resolution that is opposing the legalization of marijuana for recreational use, and I emphasize for recreational use. In a moment, I'll ask some of the other folks that are here to speak, actually with everybody that's here to support the resolution, if I can identify who it is. Some of these folks will be speaking. We have the principal and vice principal from Mingus Union High School, the director of juvenile services, the commander of the PAMP team, Ivan, Dr. Catalco, Mary Lee, and I don't know your name. You'll have a chance to speak in a minute. Thank you very much. The Marijuana Policy Project is a national organization pushing for the legalization of marijuana use. They have indicated that they will be trying to place this issue on the recreational use of marijuana on the 2016 ballot in the state of Arizona. This group and many other similar organizations, in an attempt to persuade the public that marijuana use is not dangerous, has made claims that the assertions, that the, and asserti, ascertain, assertions to include marijuana is no more harmful than alcohol. Let's stop and think about that for a moment. No more harmful than alcohol. Alcohol is the number one abused substance in the United States. It was responsible for 25,692 deaths in 2010, according to the Centers for Disease Control. According to Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, which is part of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, in 2009, 23.5 million people aged 12 and older were admitted for treatment for an illicit drug or alcohol abuse. 23.1% were for alcohol abuse only. 18.3 were for alcohol plus one drug, and coming in third place was marijuana at 17%. 7.5% of those admissions were for children aged 12 to 17. Main concern with any drug use is the impact it has on our youth. According to the National Institute of Drug Abuse, 72% of the students have consumed alcohol by the time they graduate. 72% of our students will use alcohol by the time they graduate. 37% by the time they're in eighth grade. How many more mixed signals do we want to send to our youth? Okay, marijuana is only bad for you until you turn 18. Then it's okay. We see how well this has already worked for us with our alcohol. It doesn't work. Marijuana is no more harmful than alcohol. I want to leave you with one thought this evening you can consider. In 12 years in the Vietnam War, just over 58,000 Americans lost their lives. In 12, in a 12-year period from 1999 to 2010, 151,648 people were killed in the U.S. in alcohol-related accidents. It's no more dangerous than alcohol. Of that number, 23,088 were under the age of 21. I would also submit that legalizing marijuana in Arizona will be only inviting the crime cartels from Mexico into our state. They would now be able to sell their product here legally with no fear of law enforcement. With Arizona being a border state, it'd simply open the floodgates for the criminal activity and the other associated crimes that follow them wherever they go: murder, robberies, kidnapping, money laundering, strong-arming, and others. Many say that this should be voted on by the citizens, and I agree. Every citizen should have a right to vote, and we should never take the right to vote away from citizens. But I'd submit that the resolution does not remove a person's right to vote. It only makes a public statement that the city government publicly states that we do not support the legalization of marijuana, and it's, this decision is based on truth, facts, and educated people, not based on emotions. We've seen what happens when we have emotions. We have medical marijuana. We all seen the ads that were played on TV for the medical marijuana, parading cancer patients after cancer patient in front of us. Yet today's medical marijuana cards are held by, I believe it is 80%, are chronic back pain or chronic pain, age 20 to 35 males. Not a lot of cancer patients. After tonight's presentations, I would respectfully request that the honorable body approve the proposed resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief while he's up here?
Questions?
No questions so far, but we'll have you back up if you don't leave too soon.
I'm not going anywhere, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So council, did you have some comments?
Let's see. I'll jump in there.
Okay, Mr. Dalling?
Let's see. I probably have a different perspective on this, and I've been, since the initial presentation of the Marijuana Harmless Think Again at the end of last year, it's been on my mind, and I have, you know, certainly met with people and discussed it. And I have to go back to a couple of different things. It has been said that those who ignore lessons earned from, learned from history are doomed to repeat them, and I fear that this could be the case this evening. On the surface, the resolution before us seemed harmless, but I say think again. The last time we attempted a prohibition of alcohol, we saw a staggering increase in the areas of incarceration, medical emergencies from questionable and unregulated sources of alcohol, and illegal profits from organized crime. The statistics are concrete and the graphs are clear. It simply did not work. So here we are, many years later, repeating the same exercise with another substance. We've actually been, already been prohibited basically through its lifetime here, or since somebody signed it onto a law. Given sheets with facts and figures that are rightly concerning, but I believe we wouldn't be presented to them with points opposing that, because that's not the idea. I applaud Matforce and their outstanding work on the meth and prescription medications, as well as the recently noted heroin issues. However, I take issue with the efforts to impede the democratic process with the passing of a resolution that by the, the county attorney's own words, was made to create a hard target of the area for any upcoming ballot initiatives. When I read that, I was deeply troubled. You know, it seems to me that we can't, we have a hard enough time getting people to vote at all. Creating a hard target of the voting for whatever the purpose is, it just seems to run counter to the purpose of being an elected official. As well as using, the other problem I have is that children are being used to create a false choice in this discussion. We all care for the children. We all don't want them to use drugs, or alcohol, or tobacco. The way this resolution is worded, anyone not voting for it is assumed or portrayed to not care about the children, when in fact that is far from true. Why don't we have a resolution to solve the reason that kids do drugs, alcohol, or tobacco in the first place, rather than trying to patch the boat after it has already sprung a leak? I think this resolution should be, I don't know that we had one presentation on it, and now it's sort of here. I don't know that many of us had much of a chance to discuss it. I know that we have all had individual meetings with certain representatives from that. I think it should be tabled for discussion, and we should allow the other side of the argument to be heard. For example, I read in the Camp Verde paper that one of the council members there stated that, and I thought that would be interesting, that a council member actually said, let's see the other side of the, of the coin. And I think, although I wasn't able to make the meeting, I think the only presentation that was formally made was from Matforce. So I think that there are other, other situations taking place that we're, we're not really getting the full picture on. Consider a few following points. The Gallup poll, the recent Gallup poll, says that about 38% of the population has tried marijuana. That makes it about 1 in 3. I say, look left, look right, do you see an addict? Would you really know for sure? Hard to say. About 7% of the population of the United States use regularly. So, you know, 7 out of 100 people, if you've got a room, we just had, I don't know, 60 people here, maybe, so you've got a good chance of having 3 or 4. Was it a teacher? Was it a doctor? Was it a lawyer? Was it intelligent people? Was it people who may not be as intelligent? I don't know. The federal government actually just approved marijuana, a study for the use of medical marijuana in the treatment of veterans with PTSD. When I go through these, you know... When I go through these, you know, and I said, I've gone, I've been researching it. I'm not basing my decisions on emotion. It does concern me, you know, that we have things. Legal pot will target kids. Well, I looked it up, and it was this annual survey conducted by the Center for Disease Control, found that marijuana use by Colorado high school students has dropped since the state began regulating medical marijuana in 2010. And, you know, I know some people will take issue with these, but I, kids will think pot's okay, teen use will skyrocket. An institute for the study of labor research conducted in 2012 by universities in Colorado, Montana, Oregon, found no statistical evidence that legalization increased the probability of teen use, and noted that the data often showed a negative relationship between legalization and teen use. State surveys of students in several states with medical marijuana laws have consistently reported declines in teen use since the laws were passed. And I know that you're focusing on recreational, I understand that. You know, the other thing, you know, marijuana contains over 400 chemicals. Well, a lot of, you know, so does coffee, broccoli, and mother's milk. It's kind of an odd one. Today's pot is stronger, is an argument that I've heard. And that may be, but if it's actually legalized and regulated, at least we'll know what's in it. There's all those usual things. And the last point, you know, I have several of them, but the last point had to do with the IQ drop on children, which is, seems to me to be heavily played upon. And when I researched that research, I found that somebody took the exact same exam, the same set of, the same data set from a study that was done in Dunedin, New Zealand, of a large group of people, following from a large swath of their lifetime, and they applied their own factors to it, accounting for socioeconomic status, grade level indications, you know, certain factors that are not related to marijuana. And their IQ drop over the same set of people, over the same period of time, was almost identical. Now, they did not say that disproved the other study, but it did say that it gave good cause to reexamine the methodology used. So I just come back to that, that I think that there needs to be careful consideration of this, and that I think it's important enough that it needs to be looked at, and that we need to examine all sides of that. And I realize that will not make me a very popular person, but I was not elected to become popular, and I will just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Pratt.
Yeah, I've been on the fence with this one all along, and if marijuana was legalized, it wouldn't change my life whatsoever. It wouldn't change my life if it's not legalized. I did recently read a book that I think people should probably read called Reefer Sanity. It opened my eyes to some facts that I didn't know about, so I do have concerns about, more concerns about the legalization than I did previously. And again, I do recommend the book, Reefer Sanity, and I thought it was a clever title, response to the Reefer Madness. A couple of my concerns are, one is, I did ask, request that this be put on a work session so we could have an in-depth discussion about it, maybe invite the public. You know, it's, the people are going to speak. When I see that 58% of the people want it legalized, according to one poll, and I'm trying to remember who conducted the poll, that maybe it's not up to us to speak for the people here, that maybe we'd be better off lettering it go to the democratic process and having people vote on it. And again, it certainly does concern me that if it is legalized, does that mean it will increase use amongst young people? Well, Jesse just cited a survey that said, "No, in Colorado it didn't." I don't know if that's true. But what I'd really like to see is, I'd like to see this on a work session, I'd like to see a discussion of it. And again, it doesn't mean I'm for the legalization of marijuana, but I would like it to be an open democratic process. However, I will reiterate again that I would suggest people read that book, no matter what side of the fence you're on. And as I said, I'm on the fence. I'm leaning more one way than I was previously, but I would like to see this in a work session. So I would support tabling this for now.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I am on Matforce, and I believe in what Matforce stands for, and that Matforce is one of the organizations that is out there to protect the human interest and the children. And I know of a gentleman that came back, he was in the square when Saddam Hussein's statue was torn down. He saw a lot. It really messed him up, totally. He's got PTSD worse than I've ever seen anybody. My husband has it from Vietnam, and this young man has it much worse from Iraq. He got home, he became disabled, they put him on medical marijuana. He is now sitting in his apartment, he's lost his home, he's lost his wife, he's hooked on drugs with the marijuana, he's dropped out of school. This was a very productive young man that was raised here in the Verde Valley. Now, if that's progress, I don't see it. That's one person I personally know that it's affected that way. I've seen other Vietnam vets that came home, they didn't have the medical marijuana, but they got hooked on the marijuana when they got home from Vietnam, and they're still not productive citizens of the city, or the county, or wherever they live. So it's not just because of my affiliation with Matforce that I respect it so highly. It's the best thing I've ever been involved with in my 20 years with the city of Cottonwood. I see good results. These people over here break their backs to try to protect us against what's going on in this country, and to me, it's not okay. It never will be okay. My husband's got Alzheimer's. He could have a medical marijuana card. I've got Crohn's. I could have it. I see where it would do me absolutely no good or him either. Why would you give somebody something that affects their brain that their brain's already affected? You know, I don't get it. I know there's a push from outside sources, and that really irks me on any of these issues that comes to Arizona. They're all going all over the country, and they're basically brainwashing people. So that is my opinion of it.
Just wait till the council's done, please. What I have been thinking about is, you know, for adults, I really, it's like, for adults, it wouldn't bother me, but it is about the children. I realize that there are various studies, pro and con, and one study will negate the other study. But what really impacted me was our youth commission coming to the council, and this was one of their topics. And I asked for the minutes today, and so the youth were thinking about getting a motivational speaker to talk about drug use. One of their issues right here in the minutes is marijuana, alcohol, all of the substances and illegal abuses. They're worried about it impacting their peers, and they're very concerned about that. So that makes a big difference to me, that we actually had our whole youth commission come in here, stand right here, and ask us for help. That impacts me. So, Tim, neither of you guys want to comment before we have...
I'm anxious to hear what everyone else has to say. I will say that I personally believe that marijuana should be legal for adults, that they can make their decisions, and if they want to choose to hurt themselves, that's their choice. Keeping it out of the hands of kids is something that's very important to me. I don't want to understate that, it truly is, and I don't mean to be disrespectful of the work that Matforce has done, because I know you've done tremendous work and made tremendous progress in the community. But, you know, that being said, I voted against the medical marijuana industry when it came on the ballot, because I felt like that was a backdoor way to get to the legalization of marijuana. And I know the stats on that, and they're pretty clear on who actually has it, you know, but the stats for me aren't clear enough on the dangers of marijuana versus alcohol. So I would like to get some more credible sources on both sides, so that I can make a more educated decision. As it stands now, that's where I'm at. You know, that being said, I do want to find a way that we can encourage our kids to keep away from marijuana, and alcohol, and tobacco, and I just, I'm not sure that this is, you know, the most effective way to do it. And just to chime in on what Pratt was saying earlier, I think we are an elected body, so I'm really comfortable, you know, approving or not approving this resolution. I don't know that it needs to go to vote to the citizens of Cottonwood. I think we were elected to make those decisions, so I'm comfortable approving or not approving this resolution. That being said, I think I would like to hear a report from the other side and get a well-rounded discussion, and with, like I said, with credible sources, because I think that on both sides of the fence, you know, we can shop for, we can shop for answers, we can shop for statistics, but if we can get, you know, statistics from credible sources, then I think we'd be able to have a more meaningful discussion.
Okay, so we can have members of the public speak. Leon Catalico, Dr. Catalico, did I say it right?
Catalico.
Catalico.
Yes, you did.
Just Dr. C., okay?
Yes, ma'am.
That makes it easier.
I've been a practicing family physician for 38 years. I recently retired in October 2013. I practiced in Cottonwood for a number of years, and I'm proud to say that a lot of my former patients are now my friends, that I meet in Walgreens, in Walmart, and wherever. I'm here tonight on behalf of Matforce to request that you adopt the resolution against the legalization of marijuana for recreational use in Arizona. I'm not referring to medical marijuana, which is currently permissible under Arizona law. Marijuana is still considered a Schedule I drug under federal law, which means it is a drug with no medical use and highly addictive and considered dangerous according to federal standards. In the 38 years of family practice that I did, I've been witness to the severe harm caused by drug abuse of all types, including alcohol, prescription drugs, to patients and their families, especially to the children. Whether or not the children use the drugs, the effect of the use of the drugs on their parents has an effect on the children. If the children use the drugs, it's even worse. Now, marijuana has been shown to be an addictive drug. There are studies that we can show you that prove that. Marijuana is stronger today in its effect on the human brain and personal well-being of users than it has ever been. It is not your father's marijuana. Regular users between the ages of 14 and 24 can suffer a drop in IQ, approximately 7 to 10 points, causing them to fall from average intelligence to below average intelligence in some cases. Now, we all know marijuana causes something called a motivational syndrome, or the typical picture of a lazy individual lying on the sofa, not interested in doing anything but getting his next marijuana cigarette to get high, and afterwards have his Cheetos. Now, the big problem here is that our youth is at risk, and therefore, the future of our country, which lies in the hands of our youth, is also at great risk. At present, we are not competing as we should with other countries such as China, Japan, and the like, to produce enough engineers, scientists, teachers, et cetera. Legalization of marijuana for recreational use is only going to make this situation much worse. I'd like to give you a comparison, if you would think a minute, about medical marijuana versus legalized marijuana. Compare my using morphine to help a patient who's in severe pain in the hospital. It's an excellent drug. It relieves pain. In some cases, it helps to save lives. Now suppose we took that morphine and sold it on the street for recreational use, and allowed people to take it just to get the high? Or how about if we even put opium up for recreational use and allowed the opening of opium dens like they had in China at the turn of the century? One thing can lead to another. As far as I'm concerned, there remains no legitimate use for smoked marijuana other than to get high. The compounds that are derived from marijuana are already in use in pharmaceutical-grade medications. They are effective, and they help people, but not smoked marijuana. There's no way to tell how much you get, what the blood levels are, and what the effect is. This kind of behavior in the past has been responsible for the downfall of several nations, notably China, that went through the opium dens, and the United States should never consider this path to destruction. So whatever your thoughts are on adults, remember, adults affect children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Ivan Anderson?
Good evening. My name is Ivan Anderson. I live in Cottonwood. My first time speaking in front of the council, so I'm trying to get it right. Don't judge my grammar. I'm a father of two teenage boys here in the Verde Valley. I'm a firefighter paramedic here in the Verde Valley. I've been a member of Matforce now since the beginning of Matforce in 2006. My majority of my time has been spent talking to teens and parents, mostly teenagers in the Verde Valley, and Yabulby County, for the past four to five years. I've talked to thousands of teenagers. I go to schools, I go to probation offices, I go to, help me out, Scott?
Detention?
Detention centers, thank you. Lately, I've been kind of focusing mostly on detention centers, though. Going to the schools, middle schools, and talking to the teenagers and stuff, and getting their ideas about marijuana and drug use in general. I can tell you right now that marijuana to any teenager, whether they're 12 or 18, is not a big deal. They have zero concern about the harm of marijuana. We've been kind of changing our format a little bit with Matforce, and talking about giving different levels of harm that kids have towards anything, whether it be alcohol, meth, cigarettes, marijuana, or whatever. I've been using that format now for over a year. When I talk about alcohol, I get anything from a 5 being the most harmful to maybe a 3. And that's generally because the kids can relate to what it does to their families, and the families that are in jail, or the fact that they're in jail, or whatever. Tobacco generally rates up there as high as a 3, maybe a 4. When I talk about marijuana to the youth, I get negative 1s, I get zeros, I get 1, 1.5. Kids do not think marijuana is harmful, okay? So, I mean, I understand you guys have your opinions, and I appreciate you actually telling us what your opinions are, and not agreeing with us. I don't want everybody to come in here and just say, "Oh, you know, it's the greatest thing ever, you guys are awesome." I want you to have an honest discussion about this. But I also want you to realize that what we're telling you is the truth. What you're going to hear from the folks that support marijuana being legal generally is backed up by falsehoods or just lies outright. As a paramedic, I have dealt with and transported numerous drug addicts in my career, whether it's being taken to the hospital here, transported into Phoenix, transported into Prescott Valley for treatment, and psychiatric facilities, or whatever. When I have the opportunity to talk to addicts, who are drug addicts at this point, who now have their lives wrecked, who are now on hard drugs, whether it be meth, heroin, whatever, I ask them, and generally, they're honest with me 100% of the time, "What did you start out with? Did you start out with this, start out with prescription drugs, alcohol, whatever?" 100% of my addicts I've ever dealt with started out with pot. Now, people say, "Well, you know, 38% of us smoked weed." I smoked weed when I was in high school, okay? It's not an uncommon thing. Does everybody get addicted to smoking pot when they smoke pot? No, they don't. But is it addictive? Yes, it is. Not to every single person, but it's an addictive drug. And I have the addicts prove it. 100% of my addicts started out with marijuana, and led it on to other drugs and wrecked their lives, which now costs them, and it costs us as taxpayers. As far as the idea that it won't harm our kids, and that only the parents smoke it, that the idea of that is kind of like saying, "Well, we're going to, once we let Jeannie out, we'll try and control it." It won't happen. I mean, look at alcohol. You know, it's 21-years-old, and so it's the number one abused substance in high school, alcohol, any teenagers for that matter, whether it's middle school or high school. But high school, the number one thing that gets abused is alcohol, number two is marijuana, and number three is opiates right now in the high schools. So marijuana is a problem. I think this council should really think hard about voting yes on this resolution, because it is with the youth. And, you know, I fully agree that we should have a discussion about it, put it on a work session, and then we'll come back down here and we'll talk about it. Careful what you wish for, but I certainly think you should have the other side of the argument here also, and I look forward to that discussion. Thank you for your time.
But this was a posted meeting, and it was the opportunity for all sides to be here. It's a published meeting, and so everyone has the opportunity for or against.
Okay, then I suggest you just go ahead and pass it.
Mary Lee?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Mary Lee Fowler, and I'm the executive director of Matforce, and I've had the pleasure of working for Matforce for the past seven years. And I'm going to tell you guys the reason I applied for this job. I actually was involved with some family businesses that I'd just sold, and anyway, and I got a call one day from a young lady that was being arrested, and she was addicted to meth, and she asked me to go and pick up her two children from school. It was a five-year-old and a six-year-old. And I have to be really honest with you guys, I couldn't even vocalize this story for And I have to be really honest with you guys, I couldn't even vocalize this story for years because it brings such trauma to me. Anyway, those two little young children lived in my house off and on for the following year, and I went into their home, and I saw what they lived in, and that was what seriously just traumatized me. There wasn't food in the fridge, there was a rotted turkey and a bottle of ketchup. It was the most disgusting thing I'd ever seen. And I'd actually been in the only child I've ever seen born, I've had my own kids, but this child that I picked up from school that day, I actually watched be born in the hospital in Cottonwood. So I saw the devastation of meth, and as you know, MAP Force started around the problem of meth. And, you know, the name MAP Force originally stood for the Methamphetamine Advisory Task Force. And you guys know that, you know, you've talked about it, and Cottonwood has always been a partner with us, and when we were dealing with synthetic drugs and looking at that issue and saying, "No, we don't want synthetic drugs sold in our community," you guys, once again, stood up and made that statement. And with prescription drugs, you know, Dr. Catalico has worked so hard with us, the medical community, our hospitals, changing their policies for prescribing opioids and doing wonderful things to address that. But I'm here to tell you that I believe from the bottom of my heart, and with seven years of being very committed to this job, that we are in the biggest fight of our life, and it's with this issue of marijuana. And you know, it's really interesting, I think, because people will say, "It's not as dangerous, it's not as dangerous as meth, it's not as dangerous as prescription drugs." Well, you know what, maybe it isn't for a lot of people, but again, when we started about talking about addiction, addiction is addiction. I've lived it firsthand in my family, I've talked till I was blue in my face, that there's no harm with marijuana, and struggled with somebody not realizing that smoking marijuana for years and going to other drugs. There is harm in marijuana. And I just want to mention about a couple things that came up, just to address some things. One of the things that you mentioned was a hard target. We're not trying to create a hard target against people being able to vote. I mean, I want everybody to get out and vote. That's the wonderful thing about our country. We're trying to create a hard target against the Marijuana Policy Project, because that's the group that came to Arizona in 2010 with $800,000. You guys can go to the records and see it at the Arizona Corporation Commission, came and put that money into those advertisements showing the sick cancer patient and not telling people the truth of what was in that initiative. That's what we are fighting against, because they're the people who are going to come in 2016 and try to get people to vote yes on legalizing marijuana. And I'm going to tell you guys, they don't know the facts. Ivan mentioned that a lot of times the other side does not stick with the facts. It is true. You know, it is so important to us that we're telling you guys facts, and you talked about different studies and the things that can be debated. Well, when we, with MAP Force, we look at studies from the National Institute for Drug Abuse, we look at studies from Sampson, the Substance Abuse Mental Health and Services Administration. That's what, we have to look at those things, that's where we get our facts. And the facts that they tell us is one out of every six young people that start to smoke marijuana will become addicted. They have, they reviewed that study that was done in New Zealand on IQ, and NIDA said to us, "This is a valid study, it does lower IQ." You guys have fact sheets, you heard Sheila speak on marijuana harmless think again. I could go on and on and on about the devastation, but I'm telling you guys right now, legalizing a drug will do nothing but cause destruction to this country. And I have two grandchildren, I got to spend most of the day with my nine-month-old granddaughter, and I'm telling you guys, I don't care, this has been the most not fun fight at all, we have to, we, people are threatening us. I mean, it's terrible, but you know what, I am going to fight with every single ounce that I have, and I'm going to ask you guys to stand up and fight with us, because this drug being legalized is going to be the destruction of our country. I firmly believe that, and I'm going to say this to you, you know what, it's not going to affect my life either. I'm not going to decide I'm going to go smoke marijuana. I'm not real far from retirement age, you know, I have enough money that I can live, but you know what, I care about the future of our country. And, you know, we got the Board of Supervisors to stand with us, we got Prescott Valley Council, we got the Prescott Council, we got the Camp Verde Council, we got the Chinook Council. And you know what, I have more respect for this council sitting in front of me right now than any of those, because I know the record that you guys have always stood for with MAP Force and said, "We're against drugs, we're against addiction, we're against harm to our communities." So I'm going to ask you again, please stand with us, because it's an amotivational drug. One other thing, if I could just say about the statistics again with the youth use. Medical marijuana states the youth use is much higher. That's proven to us in Arizona, between 2010 and 2012, when medical marijuana was legalized, in the Arizona Youth Survey that was done, 18% of our 12th graders, 30-day use of marijuana. 2012, 25% 30-day use. In Colorado, according to the Monitoring the Future Study, it went from 6% to 12%. It is double the rate. The youth of young people in Colorado using marijuana now is double the national rate. Those are facts. I don't want anybody to say anything on behalf of MAP Force that isn't a fact, but I'm just going to ask you guys, please stand with us in this fight.
I have to ask you a question. As I said, I admitted my ignorance. I've learned a lot through some research I've done, and again, reading the book, but I'd never heard of the Marijuana Policy Project. Who are these people?
It's a group, it's actually a nonprofit agency, it's based out in Washington, D.C.
Okay.
And their goal is to legalize marijuana. You can go on the website, it's mpp.org, Marijuana Pol-, yeah, mpp.org, and they have a strategic plan, and right on that strategic plan is where they say that Arizona is earmarked for 2016.
And do you know who funds them?
George Soros is a major funder of theirs, Peter Lewis was. They also do a lot of grassroots fundraising, but yeah, there's some major people that fund the Marijuana Policy.
It makes me wonder where I've been, because I haven't heard.
Yeah. Please look up their website.
Did you say they were funded by George Soros?
They get funding from George Soros, yes.
They actually have, I'm sorry, they have a list on there, you can go on there and see who supports them, and you'll see, and the list is very long, and it's going to have Alvin Musar, it's going to have, and people you would recognize, their names and stuff.
No, I just find that curious, because George Soros is a major philanthropist that you can find out what he funds across the world, it's quite amazing what he funds.
Yeah. So their goal, and they did it very beautifully, was to legalize marijuana in our country. That's their goal, and they started out with the idea of medical marijuana, they were, they did it masterfully, masterfully, but I'm hoping we can have them lose in Arizona, because I love this state and I definitely don't want to have happen what's happening in Colorado, so, thank you.
So, I notice here it says evidence from Colorado, so we have Mr. Dowling saying he's looked at studies, and you have attributions here to your comments, but it doesn't sound like it's so peachy keen. If these studies are correct, it's that peachy keen in Colorado.
Right. I mean, their youth use is definitely higher than the national average, they've had considerable increases. And again, that's from studies that we've seen, be happy to supply the entire study for anyone that wanted to look at it. I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to be doing this based on false information, you guys. This is not a fun battle, again, it's not fun at all, but it's important, and you know what, I'm willing to fight for it even when it's not fun. So we want to be talking about truths. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dan Race, did I say that right?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, I want to thank you for this. Just a little background on me, I work for the sheriff's office, I'm assigned to the Narcotics Task Force, and I report to all the chiefs of police and the sheriff in the county here. And I just wanted to make some of the points here, and not bring up the children, just some other informational facts. I know that this was posted on the agenda, we have no opposition here. That was one point I heard made. At the Prescott City Council meeting that I was at, one of the council members from Prescott Valley and other people were there to oppose it. Camp Verde, there was opposition to it, and Prescott Valley itself had opposition. You are one of the first town councils that I've heard that have done some research, read some stuff, I applaud that, you're actually thinking people. I just am, I want to bring up several points. Dr. Catalico made a very good point that I wanted to bring up to you, and it's in kind of regards to the history and prohibition in alcohol, and that we have marijuana, prohibition we found didn't work. One of the things I can say about prohibition in alcohol is that alcohol is, as we've said and we define, and it's known that it's a drug, it is regulated, the process of how it's made is regulated, and there are requirements about beer and what its alcohol content can be, and wine, and hard liquor. What I want to say in opposition to that is marijuana, what we're talking about is putting marijuana out there right now, that you can grow your own marijuana under certain conditions, under the current Medical Marijuana Act, and I refer to as an act, not a law. And however, the government, as Dr. Catalico said, there are legitimate ways through the Food and Drug Administration where the ingredients needed for people with reasons to have marijuana are legally produced, and that's a regulated process. When you grow your own marijuana and you have a plant, you have no idea what it is, you have no idea what you're growing, the concentrations vary greatly out there, and it's wildly produced in different strains, and you never know what you're going to get. When you smoke something, there is no way to know based on what the plant and how it's grown, what the concentration is, do I take one puff, do I take two, how long do I inhale? There is a whole bunch of reasons why the plant itself and allowing that to be recreational is a bad idea. I'd also like to hit on the fact that, yes, we're bringing, you know, it's a bad idea for children, but when you have adults who use it and they're trying to raise a family, that affects the children as well. I just want to reiterate that point. Some of the things we're learning from California and Colorado is, I'll put another perspective, law enforcement aspect of it on there. Without bringing up names or reportings or anything, I can tell you that we should expect or can expect to see a rise in things like assaults and robberies. I can tell you that here in Cottonwood, Cottonwood Police along with detectives from my unit investigated an armed robbery here in Cottonwood, just from somebody growing marijuana. That person was armed, there were shots fired, people got shot. That same person was responsible for a robbery of a current legal dispensary down in Phoenix. We can expect things to arise, and one reason why is I can tell you, the dispensaries, the average price in Arizona for an ounce of marijuana under the Medical Act from a dispensary is about $350. The most recent price I saw was from the dispensary last week, Yavapai Herbal in Prescott Valley, almost $400 an ounce. When you take that and you multiply that by 16 ounces per pound, and you legalize that for recreational use, you are bringing something into the community or into the state of Arizona that is at a pound, that's $6,400 a pound, street sale through these places. If I could grow something in my yard that's considered natural, and it's called marijuana, and I can produce it for $100 and make $6,400 off of it, there, you are inviting essentially legal drug production to the state of Arizona, as well as Cottonwood. That's one thing Colorado has seen, having spoken to and conversed with the chief of police in Colorado, they're seeing that. Arizona would be opening the doors to importing and having legal reasons to grow marijuana. I guarantee you that will not stay in marijuana, that will be going out throughout the U.S. The entire K-9 unit assigned to my control sits on the freeways, and they see drugs, and we're stopping drugs. Colorado, where it's recreational, does not have enough, it's being transported to Colorado, grown in other states. It simply doesn't work, we're inviting something. As a council, I just want to let you know that we're asking you to do this resolution and say, "You were elected by the people of this town, the city of Cottonwood, to be their voice, and we're saying, we want to ask you to say, just simply say, 'We don't want to have marijuana legal in the state of Arizona.'" This is something that if the Marijuana Policy Project, which Mary Lee has referred to, they are the ones that are admittedly going to bring this in 2016 to the ballot. We are simply trying to make that hard target you heard about by enough opposition that we don't want it, they won't put it on the ballot. This is not something that we are having the citizens for medical marijuana now want to make it recreational. This is an outside group that's coming into our state wanting to drop a lot of money to get it for recreational purposes. And they're influencing people with falsehoods, is how we want to say it. I can tell you how we see it all the time, is that I have not in a very long time seen anyone with just marijuana. Consistently, it's with another drug, whether it's pills, methamphetamine, heroin, or cocaine, the people that have marijuana are usually have other substances. From a law enforcement perspective, I also want to let you know that Colorado has already started documenting it, because they had medical marijuana in 2000. They didn't vote for recreational in 2012. They have 12 years of information, as well as California. You're going to give someone the choice, which I've heard you say, is you want to let an adult do it, fine. When that adult makes the choice, you're going to see other repercussions of people deciding to get behind the wheel of a car and drive, you're going to have an increase in motor vehicle collisions and fatalities, that's already been documented in California, and they're starting to see a rise in DUI arrests involving use of marijuana, and I would expect, I don't have information on that, fatalities would do the same thing. You're asking an adult to make a decision when they're impaired, the effects of marijuana last more than a couple hours. I will tell you, as a certification I hold as a drug recognition expert, we can see the effects of someone having used marijuana for up to 24 hours, so when someone recreational smokes marijuana once, twice, three times a day or on a daily basis, they are not fit to drive at all, and that just extends every time they smoke the marijuana. So I want to give you kind of the adult perspective and some of the law enforcement things I would expect to see. It's a projection, just like you get budget projections, is from what's going on in California, what they're starting to see in Colorado, is you're just inviting something to occur in Arizona, which is not good. If you think by making it legal and we tax it, it's going to be a good thing, we all get a tax base for our cities, it's not going to cover the ultimate socionomic repercussions. We know that tobacco taxes and gasoline tax, I don't want to say gasoline, but tobacco itself covers only about 10% of the social cost in the long run. And that's known, that's been documented for years. And, you know, just some of the other information in there, the government does right now through the Drug Enforcement Administration, there are 111, I think, approved researchers, they have been studying marijuana for years. I heard there's a study that was brought up by Councilman Dowling about the government doing a research on vets. They may very well be, because there's constant documentation by the government, which is why this entire time they still have not decided to legalize it, because the effects and the benefits do not outweigh each other, and they simply won't do it. I can tell you what we're not seeing as well, is the, we know it's still illegal federally, we have a essential presidency out there that's choosing not to enforce it, so to speak. It's illegal, but we have yet to see anything from the federal side about them taking any action about enforcing this. That may completely change at the next presidential election. You may get a president there that wants to enforce that and make it stricter and start coming down on some of these things. So then it's recreational, does it all get overruled, so to speak? I just kind of want to throw some of that out there and leave the kid part out of it and just try and educate you a little bit. If anyone has questions, if I can answer them, I'll be happy to do that, but I just want to thank you for the time.
Any questions for Mr. Race?
I guess I do, and I noticed the comparison you used for alcohol. Is home brewing regulated?
Is home?
You can home brew, or you can make your own beer and wine.
Yes, yes.
So I think that kind of...
Up to certain quantities. Once you're mass producing it, then yes, then you need to be regulated, and that's one of the issues. Now, I'll just further that, but right now, I can tell you, I just want to backtrack, because the Marijuana Policy Project is the one that's stating they're going to bring this to the voters. That is our concern, we're trying to act ahead of the game, okay? Because the Medical Marijuana Act was brought up by the Marijuana Policy Project, that was not brought up by any of our legislatures or congressmen or anything like that. And so that act was written by the Marijuana Policy Project. In comparison, bars and liquor laws, law enforcement has the right, and government agencies in the state of Arizona have the right to regulate that, to go in and do checks, to do enforcement, and there's laws on for that. I can tell you right now, the way the Marijuana Act was written, law enforcement basically has no way to police this or really enforce it unless somebody is outside the parameters. Department of Health Services in the state of Arizona is the only one authorized to go in and check a dispensary, and they have to give notice that they're coming. We currently don't do that in bars. We walk in, we see bars, there's regulations, we check the alcohol, we check if people are being overserved, we can enforce things. Law enforcement cannot do that. Only Department of Health Services can in the state of Arizona, and to my knowledge, they don't have any enforcement officers in the state to do any of that. And that's one of the big concerns. The other, just like there's a driver's license, Medical Act people have a card they possess. I can check a driver's license from any of the 50 states and even other countries like Canada. I cannot take information if I get a name and find out if that person has a card. It is highly restricted. What I actually have to do is make contact with someone, ask them, or they present a card to me. I cannot use their name or date of birth, like is commonplace in law enforcement, I have to use the number on the marijuana card to a website and all that... I have to use the number on the marijuana card to a website and all that website will tell me is whether that card is valid or not. It is very limited. The act was written by the Marijuana Policy Project. They got enough votes, it got on the ballot, people thought it was a good idea and it got voted in. That is what we are expecting for recreational use in Arizona. We are not thinking a congressman or a senator is going to write this. It's going to be written by an outside source and tailored to their needs. If they get the popular vote, which will go to the voters, you said 58% of the people think it's okay. If so, it's going to get voted in, but you know, we have no say, there's no regulation.
No.
Sir?
I don't want to beat that to the... It seems to me that if the state would have... Okay. The Marijuana Policy Project exists, I believe, because the legislatures in so many states are bound up and you can't get anything through them. And the stigma is so high with marijuana that nobody's ever going to pass that, nobody's ever going to vote for it. So Marijuana Policy Project is using the only avenue it has, which is to take it to the people. Now, if the states wanted to have legal, if you wanted to be able to inspect everything, if you wanted to be involved in the process and the creation of the laws, then the state needs to make a law rather than sitting back and waiting for public citizens to vote on the law. I would like to, that's why I said, I want to see it fixed, I want to fix the leak before the boat gets wet. You know, I think that if the state had pursued actually bringing law enforcement into the mix of medical marijuana, you wouldn't have to, you might not have so many problems as you have with that situation. I hope, I just offer that as an observation, thinking, you know, that's pretty silly, obviously.
That's a great observation and I cannot disagree with that. However, as you said, we don't have anyone in our government, so to speak, introducing that. It's a very political matter. Nobody wants to take a stand on that, but that, I'm just saying, that's how we believe it's going to be introduced, is the policy project's going to come in, put something to the popular vote. And if it was legislator, you know, there's going to be pork fat on that. If there could just be a bill out there with just the bill and no pork fat attached and it was a legitimate vote, I would love to see that in our government.
Me too.
Thank you.
I wanted to comment that I read a story, an article recently, that Colorado was crowing about getting $2 million in January of tax income. So I multiplied two times 12 and I got 24 million. And when you think about 24 million, that's nothing in a state's budget.
I thought it was 22 million.
Well, it could be 22. I thought it was 2 million a month. I just multiplied it times 12. So, Terrence?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, again, I think, at least I'll speak for myself, that I'm concerned about the purview of whether this is in our purview, doesn't mean I'm for legalization of marijuana, I want to open that door. I just want to have a further discussion and assure that we are representing the people of the town. For all I know, we may have more people in the town that say, oh yeah, we want to legalize. Well, that's fine. It's not going to affect my vote. But I would just like a more, I guess, in-depth discussion about it. And yes, this was publicized, but when was the agenda created? When did it come out on the agenda, Friday? Doesn't... I don't think it gives people that much time. But again, I want to stress that, you know, I'm not opposed to this, I'm not pro-legalizing marijuana, I just want more of a discussion.
You're right, it was 2 million.
What's that?
It was 2 million.
2 million?
Yeah.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
A month for January. Okay, so Scott Mayberry.
So, good evening, Councilor, Mayor. I had this editorial planned of statistics and all these neat things that, and things that we know. I know Sheila and these folks do a great job in presenting statistics and what they'd say is absolutely true. It's absolutely true. And so, I knew I was coming here today to talk about this and I, I'm the Director of Juvenile Court Services for Yabai County. So, my job is to keep kids safe. I see the worst side of families and kids and what drugs do to kids. And, you know, I'll tell you, I do get a little emotional about this. It is personal to me because of the battle that we fight every day for these kids. And it makes, it's a real simple argument, that the more drugs we put on the streets, the more it's going to trickle down to our kids. Pretty simple, in my mind. I've also seen it happen with the medical marijuana thing. I'm not here to dispute the medical marijuana. That train has left the station, it is what it is. But the attitude about marijuana has changed because of the propaganda that not only is marijuana not harmful, it's actually good for you now. I can go into my detention center, I can go to kids on probation and see the attitudes change just with the medical marijuana thing. We take it a step further and go to the recreational use of marijuana, that's going to trickle down to our kids. I could sit here, we could talk about statistics all day long, but it's just common sense. And I'm seeing it every day. So I walked into my office this morning knowing that I was going to come here and I have this editorial planned and everything else. And I get bombarded, and this is at 8:00, with cases. We staff cases on Tuesday. Is this only Tuesday? So, every Tuesday morning, we staff tough cases, what's going on? And I thought, you know, and all of them had to do with drug abuse and marijuana. And, you know, one of the arguments, oh, it's not addictive, it's not harmful, this and that. It's absolutely wrong. So, what I did is, as we're sitting there talking, I started making some notes about the cases. And I want to talk a little bit about the cases without revealing confidentiality and things, but this is real. This is real, what I see every day. And you're exactly right, that I don't care about the guy sitting in his grandma's basement smoking a joint, whatever, as an adult. But that attitude will trickle down to our kids. So we can't, one doesn't go without the other. So, the first topic a PO comes to me and we're talking about a kid that we're trying to get off drugs. And I'm not going to mention genders for anonymity's sake, but PO says, I went to this house yesterday. The kid is addicted to drugs, not just marijuana, but we're talking meth, started with marijuana, but now on meth, and trying to put a case plan together on how we're getting that kid off of the drugs. And the house fills with marijuana smoke. Guess what's happening? Dad's in the other room smoking marijuana. He's got his card. My PO comes back and says, I smell like marijuana. And I'm sitting here talking to a kid, how are we going to get you off of drugs when dad's in there? And I'm not going to dispute whether it's legal or whether it's legitimate or not, but the house fills with marijuana smoke and he did it just despite the fact that a PO was there working with their child, with all the best intentions of working with these kids and trying to do what's best for them. And the PO says, how do we battle that? Now, how do I battle changing the attitude of this child? That was the first case we talked about. The next one is a child that injects meth, happens to be in our detention center. Started on harmless marijuana. Mother's in a halfway house for drugs, trying to find a placement for this child, has been in detention for far too long. Detention is not the place for these kids, but trying to find a proper placement is about impossible. So, what we're down to is the father says, I'll lock up my marijuana and I will lock up my alcohol and let me have my daughter back. And the daughter doesn't want to go home because for the time she's been in detention, she's been safe, she's been given boundaries, and she's been clean off of marijuana. That was case number two, and this is probably 8:20 in the morning. Case number three comes in, checking on the status of a boy that was in detention about two months ago. He had a, he was addicted to marijuana, and I'll say this, addicted to marijuana, and we see it all the time, it happens. The kid had a seizure, we thought he was going to die because he had to smoke dope every night in order to go to sleep. And his mother said, yeah, that's the only way he can go to sleep. Once, he ended up in our care, obviously he's not in his marijuana, he goes through severe withdrawals, tore the place apart. And I wish I could show you guys the video of what we see every day. And this was marijuana. The kid went through a drug treatment program that we have in detention. Part of the drug treatment program is that the kids, we send them home for a time period and then they come back to us so that we can see what triggers there are in the household. And all the kids, you know, most of them, yeah, I want to go home. This boy says, I can't go home. I'm going to end up smoking dope again. I'm going to end up back in the situation I was. I was, I was in tears talking to this boy. We went from him tearing himself apart, having seizures, it took us two weeks to stabilize this boy from marijuana, to him being scared to go home because he knew the environment he was going into and the attitude at home that marijuana is okay and, but it's going to kill him, one way or another, whether it's the marijuana or it leads to something else, another seizure or whatever it is. And we try and give them the coping mechanisms to deal with life rather than being drugged up. And I apologize for being passionate about this, but I, you know, this is something that I've dedicated 22 years to. And when I see this on a ballot now, that adding more drugs to our society is okay, I take exception to it because I know it's going to trickle down to our kids. It's not okay and it's that simple. You give it to the adults, the kids are going to have more access to it. And I'm going to have to try and clean up the mess of those. And everybody else that tries to do the right thing for these kids, you can't take kids out of the equation. It's all about the kids. Add more drugs, there will be more access. And I would invite anybody, if you want to come and see what we do on a day-to-day basis or come into detention, I invite you. And if there's any doubt in your mind that it's harmful, it's that simple. I apologize for being passionate, but I got to tell you, it's the wrong thing to do to allow this to be a recreational drug. And it's not about the law, it's what the law does to the attitude of the kid. We all say it's okay by saying, okay, it's legal, then the attitude changes in our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda Gifford.
I'm just a private citizen. I came with my friend who's involved with MAPFORS. I'd like to speak a couple minutes as a, from my experience as an RN, working in the neonatal ICU, working with moms on drugs, trying to give birth to babies that they don't even realize they're in labor. I've been in the NICU for a long time, taking care of babies that needed help breathing, that were seriously damaged as far as being unable to be touched without screaming. I've seen the effects of drugs on newborns. And as these kids grow up, they have severe problems. I've been a nurse for a long time, I've seen the effects of drugs. Starts with marijuana, it goes to heavy stuff. And people that are in our society that are walking around on drugs are dangerous to the rest of us in society. I had some neighbors that thankfully with the Sheriff's Department were evicted. I know that there was drug activity going on next door. I was afraid for my life. I have some PTSD issues. It was greatly aggravated by the situation next door. The manager couldn't do anything about it because once they're there, apparently they're allowed to stay. He just kept telling me to call the Sheriff's Department to have help come. And I was scared. And I don't scare easily, but the activity that was going on next door, another example, I'm a good friend of Vicki Hutchinson. You guys all know about what happened with Pastor Bill and the boys and the car behind and that horrible accident with the meth and all of that. And I was with Vicki every single court appearance. And I saw how he, Mr. Robbins sat there and just, until the very end, acted like he had done nothing wrong and he had destroyed families. He had destroyed our whole church. The whole community was affected by his behavior. And I just, as a nurse, I agree with the doctor, I agree with these other people. I've never been to a MAPFORS meeting, but I think I might be starting to come because I've seen the effects as a nurse. And it's really hard to care for patients that have been affected by drugs. They're not all there, they're not cooperating, you're trying to help them. Sometimes I was in physical danger just trying to help them as a nurse when they came in in labor. I've had labor patients standing over a toilet, not even knowing they're in labor, as the baby is sliding out. And I'm trying to catch the baby before it hits the toilet. And we get all through with the whole procedure and she still doesn't have a clue that she's even had a baby. That kind of stuff to me, really affects me as a nurse because I went into nursing to try to help people. And I really think that this whole drug thing is way out of control. And you guys had, excuse me, you, you as the leadership of this community have the power to protect us, that's what you're there for. And I tell you, I've also had a situation, three months in a row, I had prescriptions stolen from Safeway under my name. They weren't even narcotics, they were drugs for arthritis. I have some severe health issues and I don't have, I'm a marijuana carton, I don't want one. But I've had drugs stolen under my name, I had neighbors next door that I was scared to death they were going to do something to me or to my neighbors. And now I'm involved with going to court to make sure things are done right about what they did. And so I'm very against the legalization of any type of marijuana. I think it's overrated as far as the medical cards and I'm a little concerned about that. I have chronic pain all the time, but I deal with it with Tylenol or activity or something else. And I think it's way out of control and we have the opportunity to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyla Ellen.
I'm not with law enforcement, I'm a citizen today, I'm not with law enforcement, I'm not with the hospital, I'm not with MAPFORS, I'm not with anybody, I'm with me. And I'm going to tell you a story. And I'm a little frustrated because it seems to me that there's a certain aighté that the council has to think that it's not going to trickle down. Right now, how many children are addicted to marijuana and it's illegal? What do you think's going to happen when it becomes legal? You think they're going to say, oh, it's legal now, it's no more fun, I'm not going to take it? No, that's not going to happen. It's going to go up. I mean, just common sense tells you it's going to go up. I was raised of a family of six. My little sister, beautiful gal, potential up the yin-yi, she's just adorable, gorgeous, intelligent, bright, vivacious. When she was 16, she started smoking marijuana. It's no big deal. I think some individuals think because they're not addicted, it's not a tough drug. It is. This child went from 16 years old with all the capabilities of everything in the world to a single mom, on her own, lost the career that she wanted in law enforcement because she had tried other drugs because marijuana didn't hurt her. It's no big deal. And then she went from there, she's a mother with a single child, single mother with a child. Her child turns 17, guess what her baby does? Has a baby out of wedlock. Does the exact same thing that she did. You've got to trickle down to three generations because one girl started to smoke marijuana and thought it was no big deal. And there's no drugs in my family, there's nothing like that going on. And she thought it would be safe. And to take that and say, it's okay, let's do it, let's make it legal, and you think it's not going to affect generation after generation because it's okay to do it now? We have problems with alcohol, we have problems with cigarettes. Well, we legalized, we legalized, we held alcohol away and we did prohibition. Look what happened. They're different items, it's not the same thing. We don't have bars of people smoking marijuana out right now and then are going to close them down and see what happens. It's not the way it is right now, you can't compare the two. They're two completely different. So, I implore you to look at this from the angle of not just your child, not just your child's child, but generations of how it can affect... child's child, but generations of how it can affect them and this entire country are the attitude that changes.
Okay. That's all. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Lonnie.
Lonnie?
I know everybody goes, "Mmm." I'm not aware of any, the doctor made reference to marijuana being in certain pharmaceuticals. I'm not aware of any of those. I've had doctors try and talk me into starting for years that would have prevented some other things caused by medication. I don't have any fun whatsoever living on morphine. I don't know who thought it was a good idea, but it serves a purpose. And you think that when you're talking about medical marijuana, you, you know, the boat sailed, kids, it's too late. The word "medical" is covered under the HIPAA laws for reasons. I can't go get a card because A, I can't afford it, B, it would be just my luck that I'd get a card, go to a store and turn around, you'd be standing next to me, which I've gotten this far without being in trouble. And I, I, I agree with Mr. Pratt, this is not at all for a city council, nine people at all. It needs to be a public forum because it is. It, you know, again, that boat sailed. And if you're going to have a public forum, you're going to need the high school. Because I was scared in here tonight. I didn't know what the heck was going on, but I didn't want to be here with that many people, and I didn't know why. I have a daughter. I've been fighting and going to this funeral for 14 years. She never smoked anything because she didn't like the smell in her hair, but she has no problem. I lost her to meth at Mingus. I had an overzealous school counselor tell her, "Don't worry, I can teach you how to divorce your parents." Because she got caught sneaking out doing drugs. Now she has two sons that the court took from her. Now I'm not allowed to see these kids because I offered an inheritance. They got slower screws over at that house, so they think that I'm offering to support them, which I came from somewhere else, clearly. And I screamed. I screamed all the way to the state attorney general, the Department of Justice, the Department of Health and Human Services. I screamed to every single person, CPS office, "Close it down, fire them all, they're, it's, you should be embarrassed." They moved my daughter into a house, and we all know the old TLC program that was such a clean success, where they locked her back in the other room with two other teenage boys. That's how I met Officer Jim Pott, one of my friends. And, you know, everybody laughs. He says, "I go in to do a bust," and they laugh at me. It's just, wrong name, who knew? But I lost my daughter. I don't know who lives in her body. Now she's pregnant again. She went out and got a medical marijuana card because she said my grandson slammed her hand in a car door, which in fact, she was trying to assault the father of her boys for trying to get them away from her. She's beat them, she's abused them. I can't get, I was served when I was in California. I think I showed Steve to ask me, "Who am I? Am I a defendant or am I a plaintiff?" She's so, she, now she's got a marijuana card because she's pregnant. Well, you know, sanity amongst thieves, didn't want to do meth pregnant. It's okay to smoke pot pregnant. In truth be told, half of the people in college in the 60s did too. A lot of us are products. A lot of us don't even know. That would be the funny part. Go through grandma's closet and find, my grandmother is Native American, so they've got a whole different game.
Thank you, Lonnie. Appreciate it.
But it's possible, it is not.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah. Again, I want to reiterate that I don't minimize the horrors of drug abuse. You know, I have, I had two older brothers who are no longer with us, who both passed away from excessive self-medication after they returned from Vietnam, so I saw it firsthand. And their experiences probably kept me, possibly kept me from making some mistakes in my life because they were negative role models. So I don't, I don't doubt that. I know personally the effects of drug abuse. My concern here tonight is just, is this our job to do this? That's, that's my whole concern, is my question. And that's why I'd ask for further discussion on this.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I could. Mr. Pratt, yes, it is our job. It is our job as the keepers of our communities. It is our job as the elected officials to make decisions that affect, that protect, that control, that do everything with our community. We did not vote on the Constitution. We did not vote on the Bill of Rights. It was a group of men and women that came together and said, "This is what is best for our country. This is what is best for our society." We, you've been presented tonight with your police chief, with your firefighters, your doctors, members of the community, directors of juvenile services, police officers, school teachers, the people that you employ and ask to do the jobs for your communities, to raise your, raise your children and to protect your communities. And they've come forward to tell you that this is a bad thing. The people on the other side, they're not here. The reason they're not here is because they don't have an argument, a true argument against this. We have sent enough mixed signals to our youth throughout our lives. We continue to send mixed signals. At some point, it becomes our job to do the right thing. Today, I watched Mr. Bartosz with his Holocaust training, talk about the slippery slope again. What is the slippery slope? Well, slippery slope is medical marijuana. Slippery slope is legalized marijuana. The slippery slope is legalized oxycontin. Okay? When does it stop? When does it stop? It stops when we stand up and we say, "Enough." I applaud the fact that some adults need to have a right to do whatever they want to. That's fine. I, I don't have a problem with that. But my problem is, is their, when did their right become more important than the protection of our future? When did it become more important? It's never going to be more important. Because if we do not protect our future, there is not a one of us that are going to enjoy our retirement because our world is going to get destroyed because of this stuff.
And I would just like to say that council has heard Mr. Pratt's opinion and Mr. Dowling's opinion and, and Mr. Sick Boy's opinion. But I feel differently than they do. And I feel that people have been here to, people that are upstanding people in our community that I would really trust with my life. And they're imploring us to do the right thing. I think there's enough documented studies here for me with references to the studies that I am concerned about it. And for the children, I would, I just don't agree. And I would like the council to, we only have six people, it's not sounding good, but I would like to make a motion to pass resolution number 2743, opposing the legalization of marijuana.
One second, Pat.
Madam Mayor, can I say one more thing?
Yes, please, any discussion.
Before you make your vote, I would like to ask you all to ask yourself, the next time you call 911, do you want a police officer or a firefighter or an EMT to show up that may have smoked marijuana eight to 10 hours ago and is on duty carrying the gun or protecting your life or arriving at a hospital with a surgeon who smoked marijuana eight to 10 hours ago? I don't. Thank you.
A little more discussion. I had my five great-grandchildren with me today. They're at the house a lot now. And look in those little eyes from nine to two and a half, and they, they look up to you to protect them, to do the right thing for them. And they're wondering why grandpa's dying. Well, he's dying because he smoked cigarettes. That's a start. And, and when my kids were younger, they started with cigarettes, not with marijuana. But, but it escalates to the marijuana. So go ahead and look in a little child's eye and tell them it's okay to smoke this stuff. It's okay to live in a house full of the smoke, whether it's cigarettes or whether it's marijuana or, or whatever we might want to legalize later down the road. So, so in my, that's what I have to look at every day, these little children that depend on us. And our community depends on us to do the right thing also.
Any other comments or discussion?
I, I just don't see that this protects our community because it's going to come up to a vote if it's going to come up to a vote. That's my concern. I'm not saying I want it legalized. I'm saying I do see the horrors of drug abuse. I've experienced it personally. I've raised two daughters. I gave them the right message. I didn't give them mixed messages, and they're both very successful. I just think this is almost an empty motion. It's not our call.
So a resolution, I would ask our city attorney. What does a resolution really mean?
It's a, Madam Mayor, it's a statement of the council, it's a statement of the sentiment of, of the city council as elected representatives of the people of the city.
And does it really have any legal ability to do anything?
I, no. This resolution, it, it is a statement of, of the council's sentiment and position on the issue, but no.
Will it keep it, again, will it keep it from going onto a ballot for everyone to vote on?
No, no.
It's just a statement of us saying we support our children?
That's correct.
Or however you want to take it. Yes, Ms. Fowler? If you would come up to the...
I just think it's really important for each of you to think about, okay, the motion's been made and you have a second. And it's going to either say that Cottonwood adopted this resolution or it did not adopt this resolution. So I really think that you guys need to think about the vote that you're going to make and, and the message just that you're going to give the community. Again, you heard it from your legal counsel, I don't need to repeat that, but it's, it's not saying that, we're just trying to get a platform in Yabapai County of educated people that know the truth and are making a statement that, yes, we are against recreational marijuana being legalized. That's what we're trying to do. So please think about your vote. I'm just, I'm begging you right now. This is extremely important because you're going to be helping the other side if this does not pass. So thank you very much.
Mr., Mr. Dr. C. and then Mr. Mayberry?
Sorry to say this, but I don't mean to say it in any way harmful, but our steering committee meets, the Verde Valley Steering Committee meets in Cottonwood. And we would like to have the backing of the council for what we do and what we believe in. Remember when bath salts was a big problem? So we worked on that. It's not a problem anymore. Our emergency rooms are free from all that inane...
Thank goodness, that was bad stuff.
So, no, we're, we're headed in the right direction. We're trying to do the right thing, and we're centered in Cottonwood. We've got other cities and townships to back us. We certainly need your backing. So I'm going to ask you and just plead with you, as a person who's been in this area for now 15 years, to do the right thing, all you're doing is saying that you believe that legalization of marijuana will become a harmful item. People still have the right to vote if it gets onto the ballot. You're not interfering with anybody's right to vote. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayberry?
I'll be brief. I don't get all fired up again. And all you're saying is you support a law that's already there. It's nothing different. We already have it on the books. We're not asking you to go beyond and, and recreate the wheel or anything.
We're not creating a policy.
You're not creating the policy. The voters, and who knows what happens four years from now? The voters decide or, you know, a couple of years from now, whatever it is, if the voters decide it's legalized, then so be it. But all you're doing is supporting what Arizona and, and most of the country believes is a law anyway. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I was going to sit here quietly and not make a comment, but there are, there are a couple of things I'd like to say. I think that the example of prohibition doesn't fit. With prohibition, liquor was legal. Over 50% of the population were regular users. Consequently, it was difficult to do. The, the one fact that you said was correct is that about 7% of our population are regular users of marijuana. And so in essence, what we're going to do is we're going to add something that's as dangerous as alcohol to our communities to serve 7% of the population. And, and the concern is the message that we're sending to our kids and even our adult population, our young 20, 25, 30-year-olds, that this is okay. And there are some distinct differences between the impact of alcohol on the physiology of the body versus marijuana on the physiology of the body. There is a difference. And ultimately, you got to ask your question. You got to ask yourself the question of, does the legalization make our community a better community? That's the bottom line. I mean, that's the question you got to ask yourself. And undoubtedly, the answer is no. When you begin to compare it to alcohol, we know alcohol is not good for the community. We spend billions and billions of dollars on the social impact of alcohol, yet we only take in about one-tenth of the money that, that it costs us. So just some thoughts. I just, I know it was a little bit awkward for me to speak, but I'm, as I've talked to some of you, I was on the fence. But I've done the research, I've looked at it, and through personal experience, this would, this would not be good for our community or our state.
And we appreciate the work that you've personally done in this area for our children and so... Yes, ma'am?
My name is Irma Cavio. I'm a, I'm a citizen new to Cottonwood for about three years now. I am a single mom, 13, nine, and three years old. And like Mr. Pratt here, I work really hard to teach my kids and bring them up in the right way. So much to the extreme that I can't afford to raise my kids in a private school setting. So I've taken them to the next thing over, and that would be charter school here. I'm coming from a public system myself. I know what exposure I had to the temptations of being to, to be, to be, to have to say no to drugs, so to speak, especially in a small community where I grew up, because it's, everybody says there's nothing else to do. What are we going to do for fun? But I'm, I'm asking you guys to just please pass this opposition because this may be the only hope that I and I, and other parents, committed parents that care about our children, that are trying to get involved with the community, therefore I got involved with Map Force, who really need your help. This is not something that is going to be a political issue. This is something that might be the only hope that I have for you guys to really have the hope for my children, to not have the mentality of marijuana is harmless. Because what am I going to do? Aside from being... Because what am I going to do, aside from being an anti, you know, a drug, drug substance abuse educator in our schools and trying to be the leader? What about those parents who don't have those tools? Who don't have the avenues, who have to work as a single parent, who have to work endless hours and don't have the time to commit to their children, to assure them that advantage that they have in society of being educated, being well-educated, being well-rounded individuals and good citizens? From the smallest community to, you know, a large city and all across the country, I'm pleading with you guys, please be that ounce of hope that parents like myself can count on when it comes to, to the voting process. And then let that be the political process. Let that take care of itself. It's common sense to me that we as adults can make choices. If we want to make those choices, we take the consequences, we, we accept the consequences. You know? If somebody chooses to say, hey, marijuana's not addictive to me, and they choose practices, let them deal with the consequences. It's easier for an adult, in my point of view, to deal with those consequences than our children not knowing how to make right choices, that still are sensitive and delicate and haven't fully developed to make those decisions and make good choices. Thank you.
And before we take the vote, I would offer that Mangus Union High School is here. Do you wish to comment at all about impacts to your school or...
Sure. Maybe just as a parent, maybe just as a person, I think, for me, it's probably better to speak as a teacher.
And this is Jennifer Chilton?
Sorry, I'm Jennifer Chilton.
Of Mangus High School.
And a resident of Cottonwood. And so, you know, I, I didn't come in having done a lot of research, a lot of reading, because it's such an issue right now. I did read that, you know, the article in the New York Review of Books recently, so, you know, it's, it's in, it's in the news and the topic. But just, you know, showing my appreciation of Mount Force and our local law enforcement which I appreciate immensely in conjunction with the high school and, and, and as a teacher. But, you know, for me, when I'm looking at the city ma, just making a statement of position, I appreciate that. And as I said, I can't attest to facts or causation, but I can certainly attest to the correlation. As a teacher since 1991, that, you know, all of my stories are those individual stories. So, it, it was the underlying problem with failure in the classroom in 1991, and that continues. So, I, I think one thing I learned early in teaching as a young teacher was that if a parent was angry at me, was angry at the school, blaming for the school, looking for solutions, you know, wanting help from the school, well, most of the time, I learned that they're not mad at me, it's not the school, it's not the class, it's marijuana. And it just seemed like every single time, I had to learn to not react to that frustration for the parent. The parent was just in the process of learning that their child was abusing marijuana. And if you let it set for a month or two, it, it would become unavoidable. They might be frustrated with the school or me as an English teacher at that moment, because they were looking for help, you know, to an arising problem. So, I think over the years, every time, you know, I have had a parent aggravated, frustrated, blaming, whatever the situation might be, as a, as a teacher of that child, it was just a matter of waiting around. And, and so, there's just the correlation. The, the students that, that Mr. Mitchell and I, you know, if we end up having to suspend the student, that's usually the underlying factor, it's just the correlation. And it's really sad. I was out on the steps probably about two weeks ago talking to an intervention specialist at the school, and she was really sad, heartbroken, because when those kids leave school, when they drop out, when they're suspended, it feels like failure. And you've invested hours and hours and hours, days, conversations, they're your kids, it's very personal, it feels like failure. And I had to say, you know, as long as it's marijuana, then our hands are kind of tied. You know, we're, we're limited, we can battle it and battle it, but it, it's just like, it's the third person in the room, you know, the fourth person in the room, the fifth person in the room, if we're talking to a student, to parents. So, that's, you know, my 20 years of working with kids, when they fail, that's usually the source of the apathy. And, you know, are there questions I can answer about that? For me, I know, I understand and appreciate all of the arguments on, on both sides, in theory, in an abstract way. I can appreciate all of those, but I, I guess I can really only speak to the reality of all those years of working with teenagers, that it's always there. I've so appreciated Mount Force, because my feeling here in Cottonwood is that we don't have very many incidents at the high school. You know, we have it great. I think Mount Force has an awful lot to do with that, my understanding of their work here in Cottonwood. And so, I, I can appreciate lots of arguments, but I, I know that kids don't drink alcohol during the school day, but they will smoke pot throughout the school day. I know that teachers can't teach them under those circumstances. They just can't, because the kids don't care. That's not where their mind is, where their focus is. They, it's, you know, you refer to it more, more accurately as the amotivational syndrome. I've just called it apathy for all of my years of teaching English, that it's apathy and, and how, how do I get kids excited about literature? They're in that state of apathy. It doesn't leave their system, it lingers, it's kind of an ongoing effect, has a lot to do with how long it stays in their system, I think, and when they choose to do that. So, for me personally, it, it just makes me really sad in the classroom, that, that's not how we want our kids to come to us, we want them to be excited. And so, as I said, I can appreciate all kinds of points of view, particularly the ones about respecting public vote and voice. But in the classroom, we, we want to do whatever we can to protect our kids from that apathy.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else want to speak? Mr. Garrison?
I guess I have to say, I appreciate all of you coming out tonight and sharing your concerns and your emotions, and you're pleased to protect the children, and I don't think you'll find a certain, a single person in this room that doesn't want to protect the children. But this isn't always all about the children. I'm not a prohibitionist by design. I don't tend to believe in making people's choices for them, but I also have to appreciate that the only people that have showed up tonight have been all of you who directly deal with this in all the myriad of your responsibilities in how you deal with society and, and the government. So, I, I have to applaud you, and I have to stand up and give you some support, while I also believe this isn't anything that's going to be decided in this room. Ultimately, this is going to go to the vote of the people. As it's been said tonight, the train's already left the station. I don't believe you've got a chance in shutting this down. I think where you need to focus is on how you're going to deal with it when it becomes approved, because the, the, the American people have become apathetic to this. The problem isn't marijuana, it's dad coming home and having a beer, it's mom coming home and having a glass of wine, it's opening up the cabinet in the bathroom and seeing the 100 bottles, bottles of pills and prescription drugs that we've become so prevalent on as a society. We're already teaching our kids drugs are good. Now, you're saying this drug is bad, but this drug is okay. We've got other problems, and this isn't where it's going to be fought. I think it's figuring out how to take it and deal with it. And it's, it's just unfortunate that it's being trickled down and it is affecting our children before they have a chance to make those decisions on our, on themselves. But they're being bombarded with the idea that there's a quick fix for all your problems from the time they're, they're babies all the way up. So, this is, this is already, I think, this is already a battle that's already been fought and lost. I think, you know, it's, it's where do you go from here and how do you battle it to make a successful adult out of a situation where they don't necessarily have the right leaders before them as a child, so...
I've always thought that we should have mandatory parenting class before you're allowed to shiver a book up there, whatever it takes. But, you know, kids having kids, all of us, our parents, it was post hoc or, you know, I don't drink. I've been a bartender for years. I've seen more horrible things, including most of my brother being killed by drunk drugs. I, I, I wish that, you know, the conversation about marijuana, I wish we could be as serious about parenting, and you can do all the right things. Believe me, it's wrong. My youngest daughter wouldn't go to high school, as you well know. She went to college, she didn't want to learn to drink, she was ready to be pregnant. That was frightening to me.
Okay, thank you very much for every...
Mr. George Carlin, he would be loving this.
He doesn't live here, I guess, but maybe he should watch our TV?
He would have blacked those in legalized marijuana. It's everything he talks about for three years.
Right. So, I guess it's time to show a hand. The easiest way would be four, please raise your hand.
I'm sorry.
And against, raise your hand.
I abstain, for civics reasons. I don't think it's...
Okay, so that means it fails, right?
Resolution passed?
No, passes.
It passes? Because he abstained?
Three to two.
Okay. Got it, okay. So, because he had abstained, it's three to two, so it does pass.
But, Madam Mayor, I had to say, I want to let Matt Force know, I 100% appreciate, appreciate everything you guys did and everything you do. And it, for me, it just comes down to this one substance, the fact that I was a result of a life with that substance included. And if there's one other kid somewhere that can see, it, I think, the re, you know, you say nobody showed up here, it's because there's a stigma attached to that drug, that I don't know, that may never go away, but I just, there are good, decent, hard-working people that happen to use that drug. And every day that it is not, that it is not dealt with in a way that allows you to use the law to work with it, those people are going to be hiding. They're going to be hiding under, in their bedroom, doing it, they're, they're still there. And they are being created as a, a, a separate class of people because of something that they partake in, while they're still good, faithful, hard-working people who raise good children. You know? It's possible. It's not like it's, it's not impossible. I just want people to know that it's possible. That's all.
And you are a product of that possibility, and we appreciate you. So, I appreciate council members, I know this has been tough for each of us, but I appreciate everyone's opinion, and I appreciate all of you who have come to this meeting as anybody could come to this meeting. It was posted. And so, I appreciate all of you and...
Where is your ID?
Thank you all very much. Yes, oh...
Clerk needs to read the resolution.
Okay, so, city clerk, please read resolution number 2743 by title only.
Resolution number 2743, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yabai County, Arizona, opposing the legalization of marijuana. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, skipping back to the items that we still have to cover is number one, additional staffing for the city's emergency... shh. Additional staffing for the city's emergency communications center. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. As, as some of you attended the groundbreaking of the regional communications center right behind our, our police department, you know, it probably won't be operational until after the first of July. However, we were coming to you for additional staffing for that particular facility because, for a number of reasons. One, it needs to be fully staffed when it, when it opens up. And secondly, is we're taking on our fire, our fire department dispatch services, which is currently provided by Sedona Fire District. And we're also looking at dispatching for the Verde Valley ambulance, the Jerome Fire Department, and the Clarkdale Fire, Fire District. And that will all transpire July 1st, so obviously, we've got to get some training, some people in, and we've got to get some training done, because currently, our dispatch center only does police department, police, and we need to get them trained on the fire We're asking, we're, we're looking at, at five positions. We're looking at a communication manager, at least one more supervisor's position, and three more communications specialists. The ranges are noted on your communication as a 23, 20, and a 15. Estimated cost is roughly $281,000, of which 203 is, is salaries, and again, these are approximate numbers, and nearly $78,000 is benefits alone. Though these are fairly large numbers, one of, one of the items is, one of the things to consider is, we're taking back our fire department, which is 100 and about $120,000 or so that is going to the Sedona Fire District that will be kept for this operations. We also bring in spilling fees that go almost directly to the communication department. And then, of course, we've got several other providers, which is the Jerome Fire Dis, Fire Department, the, the district, and Clarkdale, and the, and of course, Verde Valley ambulance service. And then, of course, any, any lacking in funding will come from our general fund. Currently, we, our budget for this, for the, for the entire communication center is about $820,000. We're going to be well over a million dollars once we go ahead and open up the new facility. Part of it will have to be this, this additional cost. We, we don't expect it to be much more than that. I'm sure that after the first year, we'll have a better handle on what this actual will cost us. And then, we're, one of the things we did with this particular facility is that it is, or is structured to be a regional communication center. And to us, it's very important that this opens up fully operational and working at 100%, if we want it to be, if we want to be able to recruit future subscribers. If we don't open it up fully staffed and working at 100%, it's going to be very difficult for us to recruit additional subscribers to this particular facility. And that's why we're coming in early to make sure that we get our advertisements out, recruit as heavily as we can, and train our staffing properly, know the necessary protocols for both fire and police and ambulance dispatch. Yes, sir?
Mr. Alinsky?
I'm sorry I missed out on the first part of the conversation, but the, we're moving staff from our current facility to this new facility, isn't that right?
Sir, yes.
These are the additional positions that we need?
Right, we five.
Okay. So, why is it that we need new positions, just so I can understand?
Okay, first of all, we're, we're...
I'm sorry that I know you probably covered it.
No, 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 no problem, not at all. Right now, we dispatch only for, for police. We're, we have a whole new set of protocols for the fire department and ambulance service. So, we've got to get, first of all, we're bringing on back our fire department from Sedona. We're taking on Verde Valley ambulance and two other fire departments in the district, in the district. So, we additionally, obviously, we're going to have a lot more traffic, and then, of course, the protocols that are going to be necessary for, for the fire and ambulance dispatch.
So, if we get more folks to sign on, which is what we hope, at, at more regional facility, then can we expect that number to just be static, or will it go down, or...
It would all depend on, on who comes on board and, and actually, the amount of volume that they'll have. The, the facility is structured to, to accept a little bit more expansion... The, the facility is structured to, to accept a little bit more expansion when the time comes. But to us, it's imperative that we ha-, open this thing successfully and have everyone properly trained in order to be able to bring on some more subscribers. If, our concern is if we don't have staffing and we're not operating properly, we'll have a hard time bringing on new subscribers.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking though is that when they, when the new subscribers come on, will, will this $280,000 hit to our budget every year, will that go, in salary, will that number go down? I mean, they'll be helping cover the costs of those salary employees.
Well, the salaries are salaries, the $180,000 will probably increase for these five individuals as it does for the remainder, for the all staff. What we're looking at is, as we bring on more subscribers, our, our, our idea would be to at least keep the rates fairly close to where they're at, or, or keep minimize increases. But again, it all depends on, it all depends on, on when we get subscribers in, we've, we've already tried to recruit subscribers from the get-go, and we've had, as you can see, limited success. If we don't open up and operate this thing, this, this communication center appropriately and efficiently from the get-go, it's going to make it even more difficult for us to solicit more and more subscribers. The whole idea is to try to get more people in, yes, we'll, we need additional staff, there's a good chance we'll need more staff as the time goes by and we guide on more subscribers. But again, we need to open it up running at 100% and efficiently in order, of course, to be able to bring on more subscribers.
I understand that.
And I may be able to respond to that a little bit more in that, that it, it's a continual balancing act based on the number of calls for service that each agency, you know, responds to each year. And then there's a certain number of calls for service that each dispatcher can handle. So ideally, we, we hope to, to, you know, cover the costs of whatever increased staffing there is, including this, as much as possible. And I think the other thing that's real important is, these staffing numbers are based on the consultant study when we had IXP come in and, and they determine exactly what the staffing was, was, was going to be needed based on the calls for service.
Got it, okay.
And it just, well, Mr. Pratt, sorry.
Yeah, it's pretty clear, I think, that the more new subscribers you get, the more of the salaries they'll be paying, less they'll be coming out of the city coffers.
Right. And then it's, it's that balance of, as the calls go up and you surpass what your staff can do, you may have to add another staff member.
But that will, that will increase their contribution to our salaries. So I'm, I guess the question I have is then, initially, how much of this 281,000 would come out of the general fund? Do you have any estimate of that?
Not at this point, we haven't, we haven't finished up our, our agreements and we're, we're looking at our call volumes at, at this point. The major part of it will be covered.
Okay.
You know, the major part of it will be covered. But then again, it's not just the, the, the salaries that are going to increase, it's a bigger facility and it will, and it will incur some additional costs.
Right.
So we'll probably, you know, right now, right now, we're covering eight, about $820,000 of this facility. We probably going to cover about $900 or so thousand dollars when the new facility opens up.
And we'll be able to do that?
We will, we will have to.
Okay.
We will.
You will see to it that we do.
As long as he's standing.
Let me just check my pocket.
Tech has changed.
Thanks, Rudy.
We're going, and it's, and that's a good point, because we are going through the budget process at the moment.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that it operates and we do have the funds to operate it.
Okay.
Questions or comments?
Are you saying it's going to be $800,000, $900 coming up on 900, over and above the cost of construction? So that's going to be an ongoing expense?
As it is, as it is now, we, we, we already operate our communication center with over 100, $800,000 of, of costs right now.
Wow, okay.
And you're saying, you're, you're asking is, do we have, are we going to have debt service on top of that? Yes, we will have debt service. And that's, that's a, a, a council discussion we'll have later on.
Kind of like the library was.
Yes.
Because, yeah.
That, that will be, that's forthcoming.
And we finally got that paid off. That's so cool.
Yes.
Mr. Pratt.
Is it time for a motion?
Any comments from the public on this item? Mr. Pratt, please.
Yeah, well, you know, I think we committed to this and, for a good reason. So I move to authorize the creation of five new staff positions for the city's emergency communications center as proposed and recommended by staff.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the civic center building, discussion and/or possible action or direction to staff.
Thank you, mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Good job, er.
Let's see, the civic center, where did that one go?
I don't think there's any agenda items, you know, data to get back.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no packet for it.
There's no.
Because, okay, so, tonight we started out, it was posted in the activities where we would not be discussing any business, and Mr. Dowling, Mr. Ilinski, myself, Mr. Hadigee, and Mr. Garrison, all toured the civic center. And those of you who are not able to be on that tour, you obviously know pretty much what the civic center looks like.
Been through it a couple of times.
Right. So I wanted this to be put on the agenda so that the council could talk about the civic center. I know just that how important this is to the community, and I know how hard the council in prior years has tried to nurture and take care of this building, but it often ends up at the end of the budget, when there's no money left. So the council needs to discuss, you know, where are we going from here, how important is this, do we want to prioritize it? We may not know until the budget, we see the budget, I mean, you know, and hopefully it won't be at the bottom. But, so what are the, what are some ideas that you all have about what you would like to see us do for the civic center on behalf of our citizens? And you both have your hands up, but you were sort of first.
Real simple, short and sweet, we shouldn't let the building deteriorate any further, we need to find the funds to renovate it, it's a historic building, it's a beautiful building, has incredible usage, and I think we've let it deteriorate beyond where we should have. So find the funding and let's renovate it, because it is, it's kind of a symbol of cottonwood.
It absolutely is. And Mr. Ilinski, I know you have a passion for that building.
I do, and, I mean.
And don't cough on me with your germs.
I won't, I promise. It's, um.
Now our big coughs.
Right. The whole community has a passion for the building.
Absolutely.
But the, you know, budget is, council sets the budget, so if we want to find the money, then it's up to us to find the money. I think we've just put it off year after year, for whatever reason, and we've winded up finding it at the bottom of the budget, but it's really up to get it, up to us to get it back up to the front. I, I mean, I think everyone knows how I feel about it. I would just ask that we, we, we have our staff look at it, you know, top to bottom, and come up with a plan of what it needs and how much that's going to cost, find ways to fund it, and then after that's funded, find ways to maintain it, because it's not just, you know, we have a lot of old buildings that we might put money into, but it's, it's maintenance too, so I think we need to look at our stock of, of historic buildings and, you know, get them on a maintenance schedule, you know, particularly the floor over there that gets used so much, I mean, that needs to be, you know, we need to have a, a schedule for servicing that.
And we have, you know, we have to remember that as a council, gosh, eight years ago, Richard often came to us and would beg for one more person, because we have expanded our park system, our building system, and we have not added, I think, even a single person in many years.
Well, sorry, I don't want to.
So that's sort of our issue.
It may well be that we don't have the staff to, to do the work on the building, but I think we need to look at maybe hiring professionals.
But I'm talking about maintenance.
But even, even some.
You have to have people, oh, you mean you could, you could farm that out?
Well, I think.
The maintenance of it also?
In some cases, obviously the maintenance isn't getting done, so we, we need to find a way to, you know, if we don't have the staff to do it, then we need to subcontract it. Because one way or the other, we have to do the maintenance, it winds up, you know, same with the pavement preservation that we do, you know, we, you know, we, we have to do it, it winds up costing us, you know, double down the road or tenfold down the road, so. I, I just, you know, we set the budget, so if we want to do it, then let's do it.
So, Mr. Garrison.
I've, you know, I've been pretty vocal since I got seated about.
We noticed.
The condition of our, of our, of our facilities and, and, you know, one of the parts that, that bothers me about this whole discussion is, you know, we're, we're trying to scrape together the funding to go in there and do this grand revitalization, so to say, and bring it back up to the condition it really should be in now, which it shouldn't be in now. And if we, I think as Mr. Ilinski's alluding to, if we, if we can't figure out how to support it going forward, how, why are we even having this discussion? You know, I think we need to start putting a lot more of our resources, a lot more of our attention towards taking care of the facilities we have now, instead of figuring out how to create more and more facilities that are just basically taking more and more out of our pocket every year. So I'm all in favor of rehabilitating and restoring this facility, and I think it's a great asset to the community, but, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily want to see us throw good money after bad, if, if we're not going to take and, and come up with some plan to take and manage the facilities better as we move forward, so.
Vice mayor.
I've been on board from day one with the civic center renovation and whatever we have to do to keep it up. We do need to find a way to be able to, with all of our buildings, be able to maintain them. So that's up to our city staff to figure out how we come up with the cash to maintain them, if it means him taking a mop and a bucket sometimes, just kidding, Rudy. But they do, we do have some buildings here that we've put a lot of money into, and our staff is understaffed right now, so we can't really expect people sitting in the offices to do it, so we just need to come up with a, a plan to make sure that our facilities are maintained and cleaned on a regular basis.
Can I throw something else out?
Yes.
That's also a reason why I've been an advocate of trying to sell off some of the historic properties that we have, because I don't think we do a good enough job maintaining them, and I think they're better in, in private hands. But maybe, you know, with the sale of some of this land that we're, or property that we're looking to offload, maybe we could take that, that money and roll it into, you know, capital, you know, improvements on, on the civic center. I mean, it's.
So are you like saying the, the 100,000 that we're getting from the building next door, you would advise that we could take that money and put it into the civic center?
That would be a great, you know, 50,000 we have to put into parking, but the other 100 is, you know, it could go to parking, sure, but it could also go to the civic center. I mean, it's.
So I mean, it's, it's one pocket or the other, if we do the, the parking lot, we still have to, it's the same pocket, I guess. You still have to find the money for all of the things, so, but that's, that's an idea. And I just feel like it's, you know, it's, it's the fiber of our community, this building, that is, you know, we went over tonight and it was being used, and as I understand it, it's used all the time. It's difficult to get that building because it's, it's so used. And to make it, you know, it'd be nice to make it where they could have, you know, some plays and things like that. That might even be, do we have enough chairs? I mean, what, why, why don't people use the building for plays? What is the reason?
I don't think we've ever gotten any requests for that.
Has to do with the stage, I've been told.
Okay.
The proscenium arch, whatever that means. That's what I've been told. We'll ask the chief, he'll talk.
They do hold, like during the summertime, they do hold, I have seen, you know, kids' plays there, like the Missoula Children's.
Right, the Missoula Children's, that's there.
I think it's just.
There's some plays.
It's a, it's a, it's a gem in the rough at the moment.
Oh, absolutely.
If we had to try and build a new structure to do what that does, we'd be out plenty of debt service money.
So how many?
So if we could fix that one.
Right.
Then doesn't that benefit for everybody?
Exactly. How many people does that building hold? Say if there were a play, does anybody know?
Fire marshal. Know what the capacity is?
Okay.
It seems like we could have used it tonight for the meeting.
Um, just, so the council doesn't beat themselves up or beat the staff up over, over this issue. I mean, you, you got to really look back over the last several years about how many buildings we have fixed up, you know, I mean, the old Parks and Rec building that was probably the worst, has been replaced with a brand new fantastic recreation center. Our court, who was next door and using this facility too, in a, in a facility that was in unsafe conditions, is now in a very nice court, that really looks like a court. This building itself has been redone, added on to.
Put a lot of money into that, the old jail.
I mean, there really has been a lot of.
The utility building?
Yeah, the utility building that was, you know, made to look like a real building again, and, and much more efficient for our staff, and.
And that saved us a lot of lease money too, I mean, in the long run.
Yeah, going.
So, I mean, we do, I mean, and, and really, the council has been so adamant about us keeping up the rec center. We put a lot of money into keeping up the rec center. We don't want to see it going downhill. So that takes a lot of money to keep that building up, and to keep it nice and new.
And I think that that building, you know, the question of city hall and redoing some of our park facilities are probably what's remaining now.
And the bathroom at the kids' park.
Bathroom at the kids' park, so.
Is important. So, yeah, we, we have put a lot of funding and, and blood, sweat, and tears into maintaining buildings and, and improving them. So it's just really the rec center, I mean, we just did, redid the Old Town Jail this past year, and we sold off a building that needs desperate help, but generally, I mean, our buildings are pretty well taken care of. I mean, city hall, it's not that bad. And these buildings have been renovated, take, we've taken the mold out, so, you know, we can pat ourselves on the back, we're not that bad. Mr. Pratt.
It sounded like we all agree that we should set a priority to renovate the civic center, at least look at it, and at the same time, as Mr. Ilinski and Mr. Garrison said, make sure we have the funds to maintain it too, so that once we do renovate it, it stays that way. And again, it's, it's one of the most historic buildings in Cottonwood, I think, and it's a beautiful building and it's.
Our citizens love it.
Everyone takes pictures of it that, and the.
There's no, there's not going to be a single person in Cottonwood, I bet you, that will not like us taking care of the civic center.
They will love it.
Yeah.
And, and if the council would like, the staff will put together kind of a preliminary budget for it, and, and I'm really thinking that we're probably going to need to break it down into two or three years to, one, to be able to afford it, and then, two, just giving the staff the time to, you know, because we'll end up probably bidding a lot of this stuff out to outside contractors to do, which is time consuming, and, and so just all, to get that all done. And I know there's some other high priorities, like the restrooms and, and, you know, doing some of that stuff as well.
So, and then, okay, I know I'm in the minority, but I'm going to say it anyway, the kitchen. So the, the discussion is that, you know, we don't want to use the kitchen too much, I guess, but, you know, coming from, I guess, a nurturing kind of personality, when you get together, when community members get together, you know, they usually have something to eat, I mean, whether you, it's celebrations, whether it's weddings or the cultural event that we used to have that was so much fun, I mean, it's all about food and dance and meeting your neighbors. So I want to ensure that there's some kind of arrangements that people who are using it for weddings, for cultural events, can have opportunities to serve food, whatever that is. You know, that little kitchen, I mean, it could probably just be turned into a museum, it's really precious to see the little thimbles, because the story is, they had $15,000 and they ran out of money when they got to the kitchen. So it's the way it is for a reason. They sold a lot of pies to get what's there. But I just think that we should keep in mind that, you know, to the community, get togethers, you get together with your family, you have snacks or you have a meal. And I just don't want to leave that piece of it out. Vice mayor.
Something like the civic, the rec center has would be good, where they don't cook meals there, that keeps insurance liability down, but they can bring the food in, keep it cold and, and keep, and warm it up with warm, with sterno's. Something like that is simple, it works.
Right.
And it's easy to clean.
So there's possibilities there that, that, you know, people can cater it in. Mr. Ilinski.
I feel a little different about the kitchen in that I, I think that Glenn Farley would like to kill me for saying this, but I think that it would be acceptable to. like to kill me for saying this, but I think that it would be acceptable to maybe look at kind of redesigning that kitchen so that it could be used more efficiently. Because, because it is the civic center. And I think if they had had a bigger budget back then, the, you know, they would have decided to make a better kitchen. And if we can come up with the money, there's a way to do it tastefully where it still retains its historical look, but where it still is also very functional. Because I, you know, and I, you know, I am a preservationist and everything, but I don't, I don't like really the concept of putting things in a vacuum and never being able to use or interact, you know, with that historic property anymore. So I, I think if, if, I would like to look into ways to redesign that kitchen to make it more functional than it is now.
Keeping its flavor, its historical flavor but making it functional.
Yeah. Just something to consider down those lines too, that, you know, whatever we do down here potentially competes with the recreation center where we're trying to generate more use of the banquet facilities. And so in that vein, we may need to look at what are the rates we're charging down here compared up there.
Definitely, definitely.
You know, particularly at the point where we put a lot of money into it and really get it up to where it should be.
I agree totally. You know, because it's, it's in such bad shape, we don't charge much for it because it's not a pretty, it's not clean-looking. It's not, I mean, it's not a pretty sight. But it's still so special. And it's still the fabric of the community and the fabric of Old Town and deserves our love and care. So I think the council's pretty much on the same page, those of us who are here. And I can't, I can't speak for Mr. Hodeggi, but knowing him, I would guess that he would be very supportive of the, the civic center also. So if you guys want to bring us back a plan and make it part of the budget discussion, I would think you wouldn't really need to bring it back till budget.
We'll, we'll put it in as a capital request and...
We could just discuss it then and when we're...
Discuss it with all the other capital, which, you know...
Right. Okay. Anything else, council? All right. So the next item is our strategic plan. And every year, we have a strategic planning session, which we did again this year. We did a little, did it a little bit differently. We got a, we had a facilitator come in and help us. It was a, a different and unique experience for us. I enjoyed it. So now it comes time for, and we do this especially because we'd like the public to comment or have an opportunity to comment. So it was published and, and they could be here if they, they wanted to, or they can contact any of us. Our phone numbers are and, and websites or email addresses are on the website, cottonwoodaz.gov. So I'll turn it over to the city manager. And it looks like Kyla might have some presentation for us.
And probably the, since most of you were there, I, I think all the other stuff is, is, you're aware of. And probably the key section is the council priorities for 2014, 2015. And I think this probably needs some more work. And we need some direction from council in terms of what, if anything, they would like staff to do with this. Because some of these are pretty generic, kind of general statements, which don't really have much meat or anything that's measurable to them in terms of, you know, getting something accomplished.
Can you take, take this and kind of look at the way we usually do it? You know, we just have the list with the bullet points of what's important. Can you kind of convert this into one of those? And then I know there's some things on the old list that we don't want to throw away. They're still ongoing.
And I did notice that in terms of the next steps. And I just wanted to confirm with the council that that's what you would like us to do. And then if...
Yeah. Convert it to a bullet point list and include the ones that are ongoing in the past.
And then, you know, obviously, I've worked with the council for several years now. I have some idea of, of what you're thinking. And I can kind of add in some action items or some goals that go along with the general statements. And then I, I'll bring it back to the council and, and get your input or, or final approval, whatever you would like.
Right. We can, we can subtract or add, you know. It, I think it's just easier to read those than this.
Yeah. That also will be on the website, right? So the public can access it.
Absolutely. Okay, all right. So, so I think it's the consensus here, bring it back in bullet points.
Vice Mayor?
I'll do that.
And, let's see, we still have a form. We'll go from there.
Okay.
And maybe pretty soon because the budget's coming up soon. Any, Mr. Garrison, any thoughts on that?
No, I, I mean, I, I was looking through the, I'll go back up to the priorities list that was put together with all the dots, that last matrix that we did before I left the retreat. And, and I think that kind of sums up what I understood. The discussion centered around on the vision for moving forward. So, you know, to me, that, that kind of says it all right there is, is where we should be focusing, is on the things that we've already as a group defined that we, we feel that there's a need to discuss further.
And I think what we can do is I, I can take these and kind of replace the existing kind of strategic initiatives and then kind of fill in below them based on what's below these, as well as what's in our existing plan that hasn't been accomplished.
Yeah. And if you'd send us both so we could sort of compare them.
Sure.
So if we think that maybe something got missed that you, we had before.
Absolutely.
That would be good. Yeah. So I think it was sort of a whole new kind of way of looking at things, but you still have to filter the information and make the goals and the, the strategic objectives. So, okay, sounds good. The next item is, is claims and adjustments, I guess.
I move ahead a line.
Second.
I've got a question.
Yes.
Under here, there was a, there's a line item for North Main, Calming Island, and Pima Street sidewalks. Did it really cost that much to do one block of Pima?
Um, I think this also included starting some of the work for the calming, the island calming.
Yeah, I knew it was a burnout.
Yeah. An initial payment. But most of this was for the sidewalk and the, the paving that went along with that.
I'll come later.
Yeah, sidewalks...
Do you want a breakdown of that, Councilman?
No, it just seemed, just seemed rather high for a block's worth of sidewalk, you know, to me. I, but I, I understand there's also been work that's been moved forward and been dealt with with the Calming Island, even though we're not seeing any physical benefit of that yet. But it just, like I said, I was just looking down through there and it just seemed really high for, for what it says was done.
Now, we allocate $80,000 a year for sidewalks, but did this come out of the water budget?
This came out of water because this...
Because it was replacing water pipes?
Replacement of the water line, yeah.
Okay. And sidewalks are expensive. I, we don't really have any experts here right now, but what do you figure? I mean, you can just get a very short sidewalk and you've spent your $80,000 for the year.
Yeah. And I actually asked the question about this the other day in staff meeting too. And it was predominantly Pima, but a little bit of that, probably under $5,000, was the initial payment for the island.
Okay. All right. Any more questions? So, Mr. Dalling, did you make the motion? And Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Second.
The mayor made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.